Minutes. Good evening. This is a special meeting of the Princeton Planning Board on October 14th, 2021. And the opening statement is as follows pursuant to section 13 of the Open Public Meetings Act. Adequate notice of the time and place of this special meeting has been given by filing a copy with the Clerk of Princeton on the first day of October 2021. Notice of this meeting has been posted to the municipal website, princetonnj.gov/calendar. Pursuant to Executive Order 107, due to the state of emergency in New Jersey regarding COVID-19, notice that during the declared state of emergency, all regular and special meetings of the Princeton Planning Board will be held electronically via Zoom, was transmitted to the Princeton Packet and The Times, and was filed with the Clerk of Princeton on April 8th, 2020, and again on January 6th, 2021. Please note, members of the public will have an opportunity at a specific point in the proceedings to comment and ask questions. Please be aware, this meeting is being recorded. Those wishing to comment orally should virtually raise your hand using the button at the center of the bottom of your screen, or if you're participating by phone, by pressing star nine. Oral comments will be taken in the order in which hands were raised. We ask with respect that members of the public, please do your very best to limit your comments to three minutes. An appropriate public comment containing obscenity, hate speech, or relating to matters not before the board will be muted. I want to say a word about the chat box feature, which has been a topic of public discussion. The Princeton Planning Board has a policy against activating the chat box feature for our meetings. In keeping with the Princeton Council's policy, as well as the guidance of the municipal attorney, the Planning Board Attorney, and the State Department of Community Affairs, and indeed the municipal land use law, we require that all comments and questions be voiced publicly on the record. This is an important requirement for a quasi judicial body such as ours, and is consistent with the public comment protocols that are in place for in-person meetings. I should also add that while we realize the chat box can be great for webinars and such, it can become a distraction for board members and staff and applicants, all of whom need to stay focused on testimony, cross-examination, and questions from board members and the public happening on the record, visible to all panelists and attendees in real time. So with that, long opening statement. Let's move on to the roll call, please, Carrie.
Ms. Capizoli?
I'm here.
Mr. Cohen?
Here.
Mr. McGowan?
Here.
Mr. Oakman?
Here.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Here.
Mr. Quinn? Ms. Sacks?
Here.
Mr. Texarney?
Here.
Mr. Chow?
Here.
Mr. Taylor?
I see Mr. Taylor is here, but he's muted.
You're muted, sir.
I was not muted. It must be my computer.
I think it is. Anyway, we see that you're here. Welcome, Jack.
Madam Chair, Mr. Quinn in the participant section, if we could let him in.
Okay, great. Justin, could you, could you move Tim Quinn over, please? Go ahead, Carrie.
And Mrs. Wilson?
Here.
We have a quorum.
And we have a quorum and, and.
And Mr. Quinn is joining us soon.
Chair Quinn will be here very soon.
Here. Here.
Welcome.
Announcements. Are there any announcements from staff or board members?
No, Madam Chair.
Seeing any hands. I would just note that at the request of fellow board members and staff, and I, and I think this is a very good idea. We are going to try a new timing device for, for the three-minute guideline for tonight for public comments. So when, when the time comes and we're taking public comment, after folks have been speaking for two and a half minutes, or maybe a little past that, Mr. Lesko will put a little, activate a little chime on his phone, which will be audible to all of us to remind the person who is speaking to please wrap it up. So hopefully that will work and we'll have a better opportunity to hear from more people and make sure that everyone has an opportunity to speak tonight. We have minutes on the agenda from December 3rd, 2020. Were there any comments or edits people have to offer that they haven't already sent to Carrie? And if there are none, would someone like to move them?
Julie Capizoli, I'll move to approve the minutes.
Thanks, Ms. Capizoli. Is there a second?
Oh, I'll second.
Thanks, Mr. O'Donnell. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? Okay. Next up is the application before us. This is Princeton, in parentheses, Eden's LLC, preliminary and final major site plan and minor subdivision at 301 North Harrison Street, block 7401, lot 1.011, file number P2121-084P/MS. Where were we? I think, well, I, sorry, I don't mean to make too light of this. I know it's important for us to be efficient with our time tonight, and I actually am hoping that we can, can finish up, although we don't know that for certain. I would like to hear from all of the applicants, remaining expert witnesses. If there are burning questions that, I mean, before we open for overall public comment, if there are burning questions from board members for particular witnesses in between, you know, right after someone testifies, we can entertain that, but I think that that'll be a more efficient and really better for everyone way of handling testimony, because then when the public poses questions, you know, any of the assembled experts can address those questions. So I think that will work, at least that's the, that's the plan right now. Mr. Hoff? Or do, do any of our staff members want to say anything before I turn things over to Mr. Hoff on behalf of the applicant? I'm not seeing any waving hands, so go right ahead, Mr. Hoff. Oh, yes, Mr. O'Donnell.
I'd just like to go on the record. I missed the last, the first part of this hearing, but I have reviewed all the material and I have watched the YouTube download, so, and I've submitted the appropriate paperwork to indicate that.
Great. Good. Thank you. Thanks for clarifying that. Mr. Hoff?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Again, for the record, Richard Hoff, a law firm, Abisker Hoff, I'm here on behalf of the applicant. As the board may recall, we were here back on September 29th. At that point, we presented the testimony of our civil engineer, Mr. Keith Cahill, as well as the architect for what we'll call the Avalon portion, the residential portion of the project, Mr. Ken O'Brien. And I promised when we started up this meeting, we would start with the architect for the Eden side of the project, the Walgreens, as well as the revised end cap for the building. So that's where I'd like to start. It's Mr. Pavel Hans. He's the architect for the, we'll call it the shopping center side. And if I could get Mr. Hans sworn and get started.
Does it make sense to swear all of your witnesses at once? We often do that for other applications.
The only problem is I have some that are attendees now. I didn't want to bring them up.
Okay.
Waste of time.
All right, well.
As we get to them.
We'll do them one at a time. That's fine. Thanks.
Mr. Hans, if you could just raise your right hand, you swear that testimony about to give will be the truth?
Yes.
If you can just, for the record, say and spell your name.
It is Pavel Hans. That's spelled P-A-W-E-L, last name H-O-N-C.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Regan. Mr. Hans, if you could provide your professional educational background, please?
I am a architect with the Mentema Architects. We are based in Hartford, Connecticut, Boston, Massachusetts. I am a registered architect in both Connecticut and Massachusetts. Been with the Mentema Architects for seven years now.
Okay. And are you the principal architect in charge of this particular application?
I am not.
Who is the principal architect?
Anthony Amenta.
And Mr. Amenta is licensed in the state of New Jersey, correct?
That is correct.
However, who is the architect that's most familiar with this particular project? Let me rephrase.
That would be me.
Okay, so you are the, you're the point person day to day. You're in charge of all the design features associated with what we're about to present tonight?
Correct. I am the project manager for the project.
Okay. Madam Chair, Mr. Regan, I'm offering Mr. Hans to present testimony on the Eden's application. Mr. Amenta is available to the extent that any New Jersey-specific questions come up, but Mr. Hans is most familiar with the project, so I thought he would be the most appropriate witness to address any questions of the board relative to the shopping center proposals.
Okay.
From a legal standpoint, Madam Chair.
Thank you for clarifying that. We accept your qualifications.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Hans, why don't we pull up an exhibit, because I think that's probably the best way to start, and walk the board through the shopping center portion of the application?
Okay, sounds good. And. Can everyone see my screen?
And, and again, for the record, Mr. Regan, we will provide these separate, they're color renderings, obviously, of things that have been submitted. But Mr. Hans's packet, will, can we collectively just identify as A2?
I, yes, I'm just going to double check. I think that's, yep, I think.
A1 was the packet that.
A2 is fine. Correct.
Right. All right. Mr. Hans, I see we have the Walgreens building up first, so why don't we start with providing some details as to the aspects of that particular building?
Sure. So this is the Walgreens portion of the project, so as may have been covered in the last presentation, this portion of the project is basically relocating the existing Walgreens to make space for the new Avalon Bay development, the new residential building. So what we're doing is demoing a portion of the existing retail building and relocating Walgreens to a new 10,000-square-foot out parcel located on North Harrison, North Harrison. So the slide that you're looking at right here is a perspective view from the northeast. So with this, with this design, we've worked with Walgreens to enhance their prototypical design to fit in with the context of the existing shopping center, and overall produce a better design. And the specific perspective view that you're looking at here is of the entry corner facing Avalon and the remainder of the center. The entrance itself is pronounced with a canopy and some accent materials. And what we've done is lower the parapet. It's a lower parapet height than it's typically found in a Walgreens prototypical design. And additionally, it's a consistent parapet height all the way around. Basically, we've done this to fit in with the context of the existing retail center, you know, consistent parapet height. The overall design is a pretty compact design. It's a pretty tight envelope area, and therefore, we're hoping to reduce the energy use and just excessive use of materials. So flipping to the next slide here, here you have the both north and east elevations of Walgreens. So I'll walk you guys through the overall materials of the building. So overall materials, white brick, pretty consistently all the way around as a main material. The parapet of the building has a corbeau, a corbeau detail and some accent medallions. As I mentioned on the previous slide, there's some wood look accents at really at the entry, and a granite base at the storefront. What we've done to contrast the white brick is selected a high-contrast charcoal canopy, both for the canopy and the storefront itself. We've identified a select areas for plantings specifically on this east elevation. And we're going to work to identify areas for artwork. We would like to work with the Arts Council to both select an artist and a design. The building itself will have some recessed areas in the brick masonry facade for these kind of murals and designs to be implemented. Flipping to the next slide here, the Walgreens south and west elevations. Again, what you see here is the corner facing the North Harrison, entrance off North Harrison. And this is the drive-through, so again, has some of these accent materials. We do have a canopy at this area. The difference from the main entrance is that it's louvered. We're hoping to promote some plant growth along the building. It is solid above the drive-through for functionality reasons. In terms of the drainage, you know, all, all the roof drainage is directed to the back of house, so you're, you're not going to get any of these scuppers and downspouts on any of the other sides of the building. It's just on the back of house. And that's all I have for Walgreens. Mr. Hoff, would you like me to continue on to the end cap?
This is the, what we refer to as the end cap, correct?
Correct. So this is the existing retail.
What word did you use? I'm sorry. End, end cap?
End cap, yes.
I'm not familiar with the term.
Mr. Hans, why don't you describe what we're doing with this particular?
Sure. I'll, I'll explain the terminology, hopefully, and if you have any questions, please feel free to interrupt. So this is the existing retail building that Chopped and Verizon and the barber shop, along with the existing Walgreens exist. And so what's happening to allow for Avalon Bay to build their building is we are demolishing a portion of this building. And so, you know, there's several thousand square feet being eliminated and relocated to the new Walgreens out parcel. And so what we're looking at here on this screen is basically a new facade of the building that's created. And so we are creating a new end cap for this building, essentially shrinking it and, you know, creating a new facade. So as I mentioned, there's partial demolition of this building, including a partial demolition of the existing trash enclosure and utility shed. The utility components are being relocated into a new landlord room that'll be located, that is a part of this end cap design here. And this end cap is being activated with new storefront glazing. You know, the Eden, the owner is hoping to attract some new tenants here, and we're really trying to activate this facade and relate to the new Avalon Bay building. And here's, here's a view. So this, this view here is from the courtyard. The second view here is more so from the parking lot area along the Avalon Bay building. The overall design is meant to complement the existing retail building. We're using similar materials. It's a white cement board stucco utilizing a stone base to complement the Walgreens design. At the portion of the end cap that we're renovating, we're introducing this high-contrast charcoal canopies and matching storefront, storefront mullions. The underside of the canopy, actually, I should have mentioned this, at the Walgreens, underside of all these canopies are wood soffit to offer a warmer material to the charcoal as you're walking past. Again, we're identifying an area on this, on this east elevation facing Avalon Bay for a mural, which we're hoping to work with the Princeton Arts Council to, again, identify a artist and a design. Also, there's, we're showing some accent lighting along this facade. So you can pretty clearly identify the area of new construction. So along just east of column line D here on this both north and south elevation, we will be, you know, renovating the last 20, 25 feet of this end cap here. And now flip to just, I'm walking through some of the signage.
Oh, okay. Go ahead. I was just going to ask about that on the, but let's start with Walgreens. Go ahead.
Sure. So I prepared just some signage exhibits to walk the planning board through exactly what's being proposed. So I'll walk through elevation by elevation. So east elevation, there's a 24-square-foot sign being proposed above the canopy area. On the north elevation, we have two signs. We have a 74-square-foot sign, basically identifying the main entrance. So what we've done is scaled this elevation kind of proportionately to the facade in order to really identify this main entrance, but also work with the scale of the building. The second sign that's located here is one of the Walgreens brand standards, the pharmacy sign located on the northwest side of the building. Further off, you can see a drive-through sign. This really is on the west elevation. It appears on the north elevation, but it's, if you're, if you're looking from the northeast side of the building, it won't be visible. It's really meant for wayfinding for, for the drive-through. And really, why, the reason behind having multiple signs is, you know, this building does have multiple frontages. You know, North Harrison, the internal network of the shopping center. So the design team saw it was important to locate multiple signs in order for the shoppers to be easily, easily identify the building. The south elevation, which is the back of house facing the residential, the residential butters, has no signage. But the west elevation has, again, a small 24-square-foot sign along with some wayfinding for the drive-through, which are 3.3 square feet. Those are both projecting signs, one indicating drive-through, one indicating exit. And I'll flip through the end cap. Next, oh, here's a perspective view, kind of illustrating, you know, these drive-through elements. So as you can see, it's set back from north elevation, and then the other sign is really just indicating that this is an exit for the drive-through, providing wayfinding to the drivers. So flipping to the end cap, so the current tenant scheme that's being proposed is a two-tenant scenario. So we've labeled these signs accordingly. So the, on the north side of the east elevation, we have tenant one, and then on the south side of the east elevation, we have tenant two. So what's currently being proposed right now is two signs for each tenant, one on each facade. So tenant one would get a sign on both the south elevation and east elevation, kind of consistent with, with what's been done in the rest of the center. Tenant two would get a sign on the north elevation and the east elevation. In terms of square footage, you know, these, these are hypothetical signs at this point. Once Eden gets a tenant, you know, the final signage would be by tenant, but they would conform with Princeton signage, signage sign requirements, which would mean it'd be under 24 square feet. So as, as I mentioned, I have a couple of slides here. I just wanted to indicate that what the signage design that's occurring on our buildings is consistent with what's being, with what's currently present in the rest of the center. So here's No Bad Pizza, which has signs on two elevations. PNC Bank, which has signs on three elevations, the main road, parking field, and an internal road. And then the existing retail building. So this is the opposite end cap of where we were just looking, where we're partially demoing the building, so Chopped and Verizon. Two signs on one facade, one per tenant, and then Verizon, which has a sign on each facade at, at the corner right here. And that's, that's the end of my presentation, Mr. Hoff.
Yeah, so thank you, Mr. Hans. Madam Chair, we, we're, we're touching on the signs. We do have a planner later to talk about some of the variances associated with the signs, and I know Mr. Purcell and Mr. Bridger sent us a revised letter. So we'll talk more about what the nature of the variance relief is for the signs, but we thought it important to just, at this point, show what it looks like. We'll revisit these in the context of that planning testimony. But Mr. Hans has laid out from our perspective how the perspective will be from both the freestanding Walgreens, as well as what we're calling the end cap. So that's all I have affirmatively for him at this time.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Do board members have any, any pressing questions? Mr. O'Donnell, and then Mr. Cohen?
Uh, Mr. Hans, I'd just like to know, are any of the signs illuminated, especially regarding Walgreens?
The Walgreens signs would be halo lit, which means that they would be lit from behind.
Okay, would that be all of them? All the Walgreens signs, including the pharmacy sign?
Correct.
Madam Chair, I just wanted to follow up on Mr. O'Donnell's question and clarification. Maybe the architect can, can confirm this. By halo lighting, you mean that it's backlit, but with a solid front of the sign face, so that the light isn't shining through the whole sign. It, it gives sort of a splashback of light behind the signage. Is that correct?
That's correct. Thank you for clarifying.
And are those the halo lighting, is that illuminated 24/7? Or at least during, through the night?
I don't, I don't believe it'd be 24/7. I would have to confirm, but I believe that, you know, at least during the hours of operation, you know, it may be a little bit to follow after the store closing, at a minimum. I'd have to confirm the exact hours of operation, though. It's not something that I've been privy to.
Okay. Mr. Cohen?
I just wanted to give the architect a chance to respond to some of the architectural comments from Sprab, if, if he has a response. I know there were a couple of suggestions which don't seem to have been incorporated, and wanted to know what the thinking was about that.
Yeah, no, thank you, thank you for bringing that up, Mr. Cohen. So in, in terms, there was two comments, I believe. One was regarding the trash enclosure at Walgreens, and then the other was the canopy at the end cap. Is that correct?
Correct.
So at the, regarding the trash enclosure at the Walgreens, we've, you know, we, we've sized that in correspondence with the height of the equipment that'll be located and that the enclosure will be screening at the Walgreens. We don't feel that it's prudent to relate it to the building architecture as it, as it's, you know, hiding service equipment. So we'd like to minimize the size of that as much as possible while keeping the building architecture separate. And in regards to the end cap canopy, so what we're doing here is introducing a new canopy language at the portion of the building that's being renovated. While, you know, it does not relate to the existing building architecture, we, we would like to introduce a new language at the new tenants, at the end cap. We, we don't really know what's necessarily going to be planned for the rest of the center as, you know, as a part of the redevelopment. So we'd like to focus our efforts on this new language at the end cap. And, and, you know, we, we don't necessarily want to, would like, we would not like to relate it back to this existing canopy. So we, we've reviewed it, but we'd like to proceed with what we originally proposed.
So that would be the only storefrontage in the entire shopping center that does not have that awning? I, I just don't understand the rationale behind that. Are you expecting it to be such a different use? Are you expecting it to be such a different use that you want you want it to be fundamentally different than everything else?
You know, with the Walgreens, we're introducing a canopy similar to this. So with the new architecture, we'd like those two to relate.
But they're not going to be facing each other, are they? Am I missing?
No, the awning faces the Walgreens.
Right.
Correct. They'll be within direct direct visibility of each other. And on the other side of the building, the chopped also has a similar language.
Right. They have they have the the awning that's consistent with everywhere else, right?
Right. But similar architectural language.
Yeah. So I don't know what what kind of I don't want to spend a giant amount of time on this. And I don't know what kind of authority we have to require that it really is something that that the site plan review advisory board felt strongly about. It seems to make perfect sense to me. It it feels really weird that those would just look so fundamentally different and just and be inconsistent with the entire rest of the shopping center. Which I understand in some folks' view, you know, is pretty tired, but still it's at this point, sort of a historical feature. So, you know, we can set this aside for now, but I don't think it's the last you'll hear of it.
No, I and I agree. I mean, I think that in an ideal world, it'll be it would all be consistent. I mean, from an architectural stamp, design standpoint, that's the ideal thing to do. I think the owner at this point doesn't want to commit to, you know, removing all the canopies. And they would like to handle the remainder of the building when they move forward with the redevelopment plan. And just focus on the part that's being renovated at this time. So not to say that in it, a consistent language would won't be introduced at a future date.
I think the expectation, Madam Chair, is that as the redevelopment plan moves forward, you're probably, you know, again, decisions need to be made, but you'll move forward in line with, I think, what you're seeing here in the revised drawings, as well as the Walgreens and some of the newer updates to the center. Updating it, giving it a new design and a new look. So I think that's the intent of the owner. But as Mr. Hans has indicated, redevelopment of the balance of the center remains something that's ongoing and will progress over the ensuing years.
Okay. Any other follow-up questions related to that or anything else for Mr. Hodge? Hodge, I'm sorry if I'm mispronouncing your name. Mr. Oakman. You're on mute.
Sorry, I was on mute. Just briefly, can you and maybe this is more for Mr. Hoff. Like, can you remind us, I think we talked about this last time, but can you remind us why the the rest of the building is not being taken down and rebuilt? Because I think I think part of the issue here is that, like, you know, yes, it is old. And and there's there's some there's some some valuable aspects to it. You know, some of some of these those are being changed. But I think one of the reasons it looks so strange is that you're kind of putting this new element on there that's different. But but the the older part of the building, which I'm sure is, is, you know, has its own structural issues, is being kept. And I'm just not sure I understand that decision. But, you know, can you elaborate on that?
Sure. We have existing tenancies we need to honor.
Right. But there's also there's also like, there's there's plenty of spaces in the in the the shopping center that are open that those tenants could go to.
Well, when you do a lease, it's obviously for a particular portion of the building. As those tenancies phase out, I think is how we envision rolling out the larger scale redevelopment. But we're not at liberty to just tell a tenant that, you know, they're in this space and we're moving them at our discretion to a new space so that we can, you know, spruce up the place. As tenancies wind down and we can negotiate those types of things with new tenants, we can do that. But right now, you know, as a landlord, we're stuck with existing tenants. So we're not at liberty to just tear down portions of the building that impact someone's going operations.
And so and you've discussed that with those tenants?
Yeah, I mean, the the owner's in contact with the tenants. And that's part, I think, of the challenges with, you know, the the questions always come up. Why not just do the whole building? Why not do the whole redevelopment plan? And it's it's sort of why we've staged staged it this way. Avalon, the Walgreens and this portion of the building will go first. And we'll proceed with a revised redevelopment plan for the balance. It's just not something practically that we can do in one full suite.
Jeffrey, I'll just say, you know, the town was pretty intimately involved in the design of this structure. And that what you just proposed was something that we asked. It was one of the first questions we asked. And it was explored. We discussed it with Edens and and it was, we were satisfied that they had explored it. And that it wasn't possible at this point.
Yeah, that's fair. I'm just asking because I'm I'm sure it was one of the first things that was asked because it's it's kind of the obvious solution here. But if it if it's not a possibility, then then, you know, it is what it is. All right. Thank you.
Okay.
Comment on that southwest view with the differ, the two different awnings. I think with the with the newer awning, you're you're exposing it more to the south, to the light. So you've got more heat gain. So you're 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 wasting energy for that new tenant because you're you're in front of the parking lot. And the awning provides less sun protection. So I hope you consider that in your design there.
We we are with the new storefront, we're going to meet the latest energy codes, which I'm sure will far exceed the existing design. Hopefully that that should help them. But I appreciate the comment.
Yeah, it is a good point, but it also looks weird. I just have to say it. Just terminate the awning like that. Okay, I think we have exhausted that topic. Mr. Purcell?
Madam Chair, I was sworn in last I was sworn in last time, so I don't think I need to be sworn in again. I have a question for the architect on a very small, small item. The sign that is protruding that is an exit sign. We haven't seen what wording is on those signs. So I'm wondering if he can speak to the wording. It's not it's not visible on the plans anywhere. So we have the sign at the drive-through that's an exit sign. And I just want to make sure for safety reasons that it's a left turn only exit sign. But I haven't seen anything. Is that the exit? Is that it? It just says exit? I think there needs to be something that directs the customers to take a left turn because there's not going to be any right.
We can absolutely incorporate that. What you see here is an excerpt from the Walgreens standards. And we will incorporate that to coordinate with the directional direction of the road.
I'll just clarify, it wasn't in the package that we reviewed. So I hadn't seen these yet.
We will absolutely absolutely incorporate. Thank you for your comment.
Two real quick things. First of all, I'm one of those people that really loves murals. So I'm really delighted to see mural space on these buildings. I know that's not the way everyone feels necessarily. But I think I was glad to hear there is a plan to coordinate with the Arts Council and do some beautiful things there. And with regard to the two signs on one side, I know there's been discussion of whether it's appropriate to have Walgreens and the word pharmacy. In in my opinion, I don't know how other board members feel, but I like having the word pharmacy there because I feel like for many people whose first language is not English and who may not be familiar with Walgreens, pharmacy is is very recognizable as what it is in a number of languages, certainly not all. But so I think that that's helpful. Just just a thought. Mr. Quinn?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I actually had a question about the murals. It seems that there's lighting that's proposed, so the murals will be illuminated at all times. Is that correct? I gathered one of the drawings referenced a illumination.
That that's correct. So our note for these graphic murals calls for a rail light to allow for some illumination of these murals.
So I I just wonder how that fits into the to the overall. I I wonder if how at what point is is too much illumination? And whether they wouldn't be seen, be able to be seen and experienced with ambient light?
Great point. I did not notice the lighting on the murals. Yeah.
And I'm a mural fan also, like, like, like the chair. But could you speak to the overall illuminate, how much light will be added by illuminating those during? I'm assuming they'll only be illuminated during business hours, correct, in the evenings?
I believe it'd be consistent, you know, with with the hours of operation of the store when there's actually patrons experiencing these murals, you know, similar to the elimination of the lights. You know, the in terms of the light level, I don't have, you know, specific data as, you know, this is, we haven't specified an exact light fixture, but it wouldn't be an overwhelming amount of light. It'd be enough ambient light to kind of accent these murals.
And and Mr. Quinn?
Not no problem.
And Mr. Quinn, the point's fair too. I mean, we will have our civil engineer testify again because, again, these there's other lighting in the area, right? So you're in a shopping center parking lot. So I'm I don't know that we would necessarily be concerned about over illumination. But it's certainly a fair point that let's let's hear from civil as to where existing the existing stanchion lighting is in the parking lot. And and let's see if it competes and whether that's going to be an issue. But I think that's probably a better question held for Mr. Cahill.
Thank you, Mr. Hoff.
Sure.
I have one other question about the drive-through. And I know there've been questions about its location. But for someone who is on foot or on a bike and who prefers not to go into the building, is the drive-through accessible to people who are not in cars?
It would only be accessible to the heat killer patrons.
Could it could it be designed in a way that you could walk up to it or or ride a bike up to it and stand there instead of sit in a car?
I think that's probably an operator question rather than an architect's question. I can, we can, Madam Chair, we could find out the answer to that. My guess is Walgreens, it prefer it be vehicles only. And I think that's part of the reason for the additional bike racks. The expectation would be that anybody arriving by bike would park their bikes and enter the store by foot. So.
Yeah, understood. And I think most people would. But in times just prefer to be outdoors and that's it's just a thought.
Thank you.
Who's next, Mr. Hoff? Thank you, Mr. Hodge.
Thank you very much for your time.
I just said, I actually had.
Oh, I'm sorry, Zanon. I apologize. I didn't I did not.
I just rose my hand.
Yeah.
Or raised my hand. So I was gonna just ask the kind of obligatory sustainability related questions. So I guess, first of all, how are the buildings going to be heated? And then also, are they going to be solar ready? And if if they might potentially have solar panels as well?
Sure. Thanks for your question. And in terms of the solar ready question, we've we've had this discussion with Edens and basically with the compact area of this Walgreens. The roof already has four RTUs on it. And so really, the feasibility of putting solar might be difficult. Just given that there's a large amount of equipment already. So getting a good area of solar on an already crowded roof for the Walgreens might might be a little bit difficult and might not gain you the efficiency that you're really looking for. In terms of the heating and cooling, you know, these are these are handled via air handling units. As I mentioned, the Walgreens is four air handling units currently serving the space divided kind of between the sales floor and the back of the house.
Oh, what I meant is like, is it going to be a furnace, natural gas furnace or heat pumps?
The no, it's not a, I don't believe it's heat pumps. I would have to check exactly the method of heating and cooling. I can get back to you on that question.
Okay. I mean, tonight or another night?
I can certainly pull up. I I'm not I'm not a mechanical engineer. I wasn't I wasn't prepared to go into mechanical equipment.
Yeah, I know.
I apologize for my lack of preparedness. But I can certainly look into that for you.
Okay.
I mean, I think it's pretty standard, you know, just return air units, gas fed likely.
Okay, that's good. And there's no way to potentially like design the the equipment on the roof to maximize or allow for solar?
I think the expectation would be that there wouldn't be solar, given the limitations and the relatively small footprint. So I
I wouldn't say that it's super small. I mean, I feel like, you know, solar that's on a building that size probably could cover probably the majority of the electricity usage. So I wouldn't go that far.
I just I don't believe that the current expectation would be that it would be solar would be incorporated. We can check with the owner, but I the current thinking is that it would not be.
For both for both buildings.
For both. Correct.
Okay.
And I just want to jump in and say, since I'm usually one of the people to pile on when we start talking about energy. And it is that we are the planning board is more constrained than usual with this application because the applicant has a memorandum of a memorandum of understanding and MOU with the town that makes very clear what it will and won't do. I mean, not down to the finest detail, but we 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 don't have quite the leverage as a board that we sometimes do to try to extract a promise for panels on the roof or a different approach to heating or something. And I don't want to be like flipping through the MOU to read chapter and verse. But there are, you know, there's very clear language about undue cost generative requirements. And I don't, the last thing I want to do is speak for the applicant or offer excuses.
I've got plenty of excuses, Madam Chair. Don't worry.
We are we are somewhat limited. I guess I'm just making that point to my fellow board members.
I'll reiterate a point that I made at the last hearing. And that is, it's not a question of whether these things might not be explored. It's because I know from the Avalon perspective, and they've got LEED certified buildings all over the country. And they don't do that because they're compelled to do that. They do that because they think it's in their best interest to do that. And it's in, I would expect that you would see measures that while you're not going to require them, and I can't, we're not going to be compelled to provide them, you're going to see these types of energy saving measures incorporated in the building. That it but it's different to say that we're going to be required to do that. The Chair, Madam Chair, you're correct. There are specific provisions addressing this very issue as to the limitations. We're bound by code. There are specific provisions addressing this very issue as to the limitations. We're bound by code. And, but I suspect we'll go beyond that, but we're just not going to be in a position to agree to this initiative or that initiative. Unfortunately, it's, the answer is trust us that some of these things will be incorporated when appropriate. It's just that we're not going to agree to any specific condition relative to above the building code.
Well, I appreciate you saying that. Trust is earned.
Madam Chair. One point I just wanted to make, the, the solar ready is a requirement in the redevelopment plan. So obviously that's required for the Avalon building. You know, the Walgreens is subject to land use ordinance requirements, which, which don't include that. And again, I think as much as, and I'm not minimizing the importance of sustainability and sustainable measures, the issues of heating and cooling really are not, you know, site plan issues to be, you know, to be addressed by the planning board as part of a site plan review.
Well, we're still allowed to ask, aren't we?
Absolutely. And I'm not, I'm not saying you can't ask, absolutely.
Right. Well, I just want to make it known and, and just to clarify, or any of these, is this building or the existing building going to be LEED certified?
We're not planning that at this time, but it'll exceed all current ASHRAE standards.
Okay.
Really, relative to ICC energy code.
Ms. Sax?
Um, I was just going to say, you know, in the context of this application, because it's redevelopment, the municipality is in the process of negotiating the redeveloper agreement with the applicant. And it's my understanding that tonight we were going to take from the planning board their ideas for what they would like to see negotiated. So even though there's not a mechanism for compelling some of the things that have been discussed, it's not just a matter of trusting the applicant. It's a matter, there is, there is some degree of relying on your elected officials to negotiate things that are priority for you in the context of the redevelopment negotiations. So I don't think that we should dwell, spend too much time on these things because as, as the attorney mentioned, they're not something that can be compelled in the context of tonight's hearing. But I think that there's room for the planning board to indicate what would be their priorities for the elected officials to discuss in the negotiations process.
Thank you. That's, thanks very much.
Just to further what, what Councilwoman Sax said, I mean, there is a requirement in the redevelopment plan that, that Princeton and the redeveloper enter into a redevelopment agreement. So as she indicated, we're currently in, in negotiations. And clearly those type of issues are on the table for discussion.
That's, that's great to hear. And I also want to just clarify that, you know, sometimes these types of enhancements or changes might be perceived as cost generative, but actually if done right, actually, and especially in the long term, or can save the applicant substantial amount of money. So I want to make that clear that it's not going to necessarily cost them more, especially in the long run.
Good, good point, Zanon. Thank you. Um, okay, with no other questions for Mr. Hahn, so I think we can move on to your next expert.
Sure. Madam Chair, I'd like to call Mr. Adam Alexander. He's our landscape architect.
Good evening.
Mr. Alexander, raise your hand, please. You swear the testimony about to give will be the truth?
Yes.
Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Hoff.
Thank you, Mr. Alexander. Your professional and educational background for the board, please?
Yes, sir. Good evening. Again, my name is Adam Alexander. I'm the Director of Landscape Architecture and an Associate of Bowers located in Warren, New Jersey. I received the Bachelor of Science from West Virginia University. I've been practicing for over 20 years. I've been licensed for 13 here in the great state of New Jersey. I provided testimony at numerous municipalities throughout the state and was responsible for overseeing the landscaping plans for this project.
And Mr. Alexander, your license remains current?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Madam Chair, I'd offer Mr. Alexander as an expert in the field of landscape architecture.
Thank you. We, we accept your qualifications.
Thank you. I'll be providing testimony related to the proposed landscaping for the project. I'll be referencing Exhibit A1, Page 3, which I could share.
All right. And for the board, this is the exhibit package that we went through at the last hearing, Mr. Cahill went through. This is, Mr. Alexander indicated, which, this is page three of 26, Mr. Alexander?
Yes, sir.
Why don't you start by, see if you can maybe expand that a little bit?
Sure.
And then let's orient the board, members of the public. Again, I know where, the board knows where we are, but orient the perspective of this exhibit in relation to the project.
Sure. Okay, so at the bottom of the page, you can see my cursor, North Harrison Street. Top of the page is the, is the park. The proposed multifamily building is the larger brown building here. The Walgreens along the frontage of North Harrison. And the NCAP building that the architect mentioned is the lighter beige building. So just to begin, the landscape plan has been designed to meet the intent of the ordinance and is compliant with the code as it relates to the landscaping requirements. There are three general landscape areas that we are showing, which include the parking lot landscaping, which is shown primarily in between the two buildings. They're denoted with these green circles, which shows ground cover, shrubs and trees. Building foundation plantings, which are denoted around the Walgreens. And the areas of green, there's some shrubs along the building face, as well as foundation plantings around the entire multifamily building. Those are our multi-fam, I'm sorry, our foundation plantings. And then we also have buffer plantings, which there are existing trees along North Harrison, which we are supplementing as well as existing trees along the southern property line, which we are, we are maintaining and supplementing with additional evergreen trees and a few deciduous trees. The landscape palette for the project, we selected the plants to provide seasonal interest. Plants that are durable to parking lot conditions, complement the building architecture and enhance the overall aesthetic of the development. There are no invasive species being proposed as part of our landscape palette. Just a few figures. So the landscaping plan includes 49 additional shade trees, which are two and a half to three inch caliper. Species include maple, honey locust, sycamore and zelkova. We have 18 evergreen trees, Norway spruce, six to seven feet in height. 380 deciduous shrubs, including hydrangea, grow low sumac and spirea. 245 evergreen shrubs, which include boxwood, cherry laurel and dark arborvitae. 304 ground covers, 906 perennials, 550 ornamental grasses. And additional landscaping is proposed within the residential building amenity area. Our office received and reviewed the letters, the reviewers from the board's professionals. And I'd like to offer the following responses. As noted in the shade tree commission's review letter, we will work with Mr. Dobomilsky as it relates to tree protection zones for existing trees to remain. That would include the existing willow oak trees in the central courtyard that will be preserved and protected. That was a question that came up at the previous hearing that I just wanted to make everyone aware. There's five beautiful willow oak trees that will be preserved. There are site amenities within the development, which include benches and trash receptacles, bike racks, cafe tables, and ironic chairs, which are shown on the site plan. However, we will coordinate with Mr. Dobomilsky on the material specifications of those site materials. There was a question about decorative pavement. There will be decorative pavement proposed at the entrances to the multifamily building and along the pedestrian connection to Grover Park, which is shown east to west. Mr. Cahill had provided testimony to that very important pedestrian connection. The interior courtyard amenity, which is completely enclosed by the building, will include seating, lounge areas, outdoor grills and a pool. If requested by the board as it relates to final plant species selection and buffering along the southern property line, we are willing to coordinate with Mr. Dobomilsky, the board professionals to discuss potential alternate species and additional buffering along the southern property line. Again, I attended the, the previous hearing and I just wanted to respond to some of the questions related to landscaping. The, again, the question about the, the beautiful willow oak trees in the central courtyard. Yes, they will be protected. And also there are columnar shade trees along the building foundation to enhance not only the aesthetic, but with help with shade. This concludes my testimony.
Mr. Alexander, if you could, along the southern, the existing residential side of the property, what exists there now, and we've indicated, obviously, we'll, we'll supplement as next other side up against the, yeah. What exists in there now along that property boundary?
So currently, there's existing evergreen trees that are, I guess, south between the sidewalk and the, and the property line. So it's existing shade trees. I'm sorry, existing evergreen trees.
Okay, so the goal would be not to disturb what's existing out there, correct?
Correct. Our intent was to maintain as many of the existing evergreen trees that were previously planted along the entire southern boundary.
And then the idea would be in areas that might be identified by Mr. Dobomilsky and his staff, where there's some sparse areas, we would supplement those with additional plantings. Is that the idea?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And have you identified typically like the, what would be the typical species that would go into that area? Or is that to be worked out?
We, we're open to working with, with Mr. Dobomilsky and the board professionals in any additional plantings along that southern property line. But I would assume evergreen plantings to supplement. There's also overhead wires. So we're going to move any proposed plantings away from overhead wires that are along this boundary and whatever would work to supplement the buffer as, as requested.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Alexander, Madam Chair. Nothing further for Mr. Alexander for the firm.
Sorry about that question from the board for Mr. Alexander. Um, Mr. Alexander, did you, oh, Mr. Chow, go ahead.
Yeah, that, that one tree right at the, I guess, what is it, the south? When you, when you enter the, the shopping mall there from the southwest corner. And I bike to the shopping center all the time. So that where you merge into the loop is, can be dangerous. So what is the tree that's right there at the corner? And will it be growing high enough so that cars can see around the corner?
You're talking about an existing tree or the proposed tree? I'm sorry, you're muted. I apologize.
Move your cursor to the right. No, no, the right. South, yeah, and then up a little bit, that tree.
Yeah.
Because a car coming down that, coming west will, has to drive slowly around the corner while people enter in. You know, they have to be cognizant of somebody turning left.
Yeah, I understand. The tree, the post tree, the zelkova tree, all the trees will be limbed up at least, I believe, seven feet for clearance purposes.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Taylor?
My question has to do predominantly, I suppose, with stormwater management and the process. I remember in the engineering report that along that southern property border, there was a, I think the term drastic was used, a drastic, steep decline. And I remember one of our public commentators from that neighborhood also talking about the decline. So the question really is, to what extent does the existing or any additional landscaping or buffering mitigate in some way what appears to be the most severe of the stormwater decline risks that the property faces?
Anything related to stormwater, I'll have to defer to our civil engineer, Mr. Cahill, who could speak specifically about the stormwater design. Is that?
And he's here tonight, Mr. Taylor. I'm bringing him back to.
That's fine. Thank you.
Yep.
So actually, that, that gets to one of the questions I was going to ask too. So, Mr. Alexander, you were not part of a stormwater management team looking at channeling stormwater into vegetated systems at all?
Not currently.
Okay. Yeah, so I, I also had a question about the grading. I understand that there'd be a lot of regrading. I, I think I understand that it's at the southeast corner, going into the southeast corner and the curve around the building. And I just wanted to ask if that was, I appreciate that you'll be consulting with Dan Dobomilsky, that, that'll be really good and helpful. But the, if it's, if it's graded so that there's a much steeper slope, it's going to make the landscaping along there a lot more challenging. There's already a slope and I think it's supposed to get a good bit steeper. Am I right about that? Or is that also a question for the engineer?
Yeah, that would be a question for Mr. Cahill. I believe the slope is a three to one slope, which again, that sounds like it's very steep, but it's pretty, pretty mild. And we've planted on three to one slopes before, but Mr. Cahill can speak directly to what's happening in the southeast corner as it relates to the grading, which I believe he had testified to previously, but he can reiterate as well.
Well, were you aware of that grading when you were making the landscape plan, Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Okay. Other questions for board members, from board members, excuse me? I'm not seeing any waving hands or yellow hands. Oh, Mr. Chow?
Another quick question. The three trees on the north side, how viable are they given the height of the building? I mean, that's the north side and the building is what, four or was it five stories tall?
Or?
Check the specifics of the tree species, if you give me a moment. So those plantings, those three trees that I believe you're speaking to are right in this location. Those are, those are maple trees. Have a more of an upright columnar form. They, they should do fine there. Maples are pretty adaptive, so. I, I wouldn't have a concern.
Okay.
And there's, I, I think, I'm sure this will be in the redevelopment agreement. There's a guarantee for a certain number of years that the plantings survive. a guarantee for a certain number of years that the plantings survive and thrive or have to be replaced. That's not to say they'll do great after 20 years. I can't I can't speak to that, but I know there's at least some attention.
Madam Chair, I can tell you from an ownership's perspective, there's no desire to have three dead trees at the entrance point to the building.
Point taken.
Perhaps Mr. Dobmilski can comment on the maples and how well they do in shape.
Dan, can you unmute yourself and turn on your camera?
I hope that Dan is available. He's actually doing another meeting, so he's not being when he can.
Multitasking.
Yes.
What what I would say is, what I would say is that we're going to work closely with Mr. Dobmilski. If there's a concern and there's a different species that he'd like to see there, we have no problem amending it to something that's that he feels might be more suitable.
Okay. And just to be clear about the trees that are in the parking lot, those are all proposed to be separated from the parking lot with the Belgian block curb or something. None of those has, as far as you know, has stormwater going to?
Not currently. No, they're all enclosed in curbing. Mr. Cahill may maybe able to speak to that more later this evening.
Right. Thanks. Don't see any other any other questions happening, Mr. Hoff, are you? Next.
Ms. Betsy Dolan, traffic engineer.
Does Ms. Dolan have Keith Cahill on her screen?
She does. We're gonna we're gonna rename Ms. Dolan so that.
Oh, I do have Keith Cahill, I see.
I had to forward around the invite.
Dolan, can you just raise your right hand? You swear the testimony about to give me the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Good evening, Ms. Dolan. If you could provide your professional educational background, please?
Yes, I have a bachelor of science degree in civil engineering from Rutgers. I'm a licensed professional engineer registered in New Jersey, New York, Pennsylvania, and Delaware. My licenses are current. For the past 35 years, I have focused in the area of traffic engineering. I have testified in over 250 municipalities and been accepted throughout New Jersey as a traffic engineer in all cases. And I've also had the opportunity to review traffic, parking, and DOT aspects of land use applications on behalf of planning and zoning boards throughout New Jersey. I'm a member of the American Society of Civil Engineering and the Institute of Transportation Engineers.
Madam Chair, it offered Ms. Dolan is an expert in the field of traffic engineering.
We accept your qualifications. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Dolan, you've had the opportunity to prepare some reports, traffic reports in connection with this project. Is that correct?
That is correct.
All right, why don't we walk through sort of the process of both the original as well as the revised analysis that we prepared, that you prepared. I didn't do anything.
Okay, sure. The first report was called Traffic Impact Statement, and it was dated July 28, 2021. This was a pretty much a mathematical exercise that discussed the existing and proposed building areas, the existing and proposed uses, and relied entirely on data published by the Institute of Transportation Engineers, ITE, in their latest edition of the Trip Generation Manual. So we performed a series of trip estimates for the weekday morning, weekday evening, and Saturday midday peak hours. Those are the peak hours when we have coincident peak street volumes as well as peak site volumes. So the concentration of peak activity, both on the roadway network and the street, are the study hours, because those are the highest volume hours of the week, and during other weeks, the volumes are comparable or lower. So the traffic statement from July set forth estimates for those peak hours for both the existing retail, the proposed Walgreens drive-through, as well as the residential component that's now proposed. After that was submitted and McMahon issued their review letter, we had several discussions and emails with McMahon. And the result of of that communication was the preparation and issuance of an October 8, 2021 Traffic Impact Analysis. This report is very detailed. It concludes several traffic counts that were performed at all of the existing site driveway intersections. And those were all performed in the middle of September, Wednesday, September 22, from 7:00 to 9:00 a.m. and 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. And Saturday, September 18, from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. So that was after school started, summer vacations were pretty much over. And again, it was all for site driveway intersections along the North Harrison Street corridor. We we counted all movements entering and exiting the shopping center. The volumes traveling along North Harrison and the volumes entering and exiting Valley. From that data, we determined the peak hours, again, that peak concentration of both the street and and shopping center activity. And we derived a series of existing peak hour traffic volumes from which we projected future driveway and intersection volumes. So we started with actual traffic counts. We identified the actual trip generation at the shopping center. That would be the entering and exiting activity during all three peak hours, weekday morning, weekday evening, and Saturday midday. We then wanted to forecast traffic associated with the new shopping center building area, because there will be a reduction in building area. But then there's also going to be the new Walgreens. And when we we went through the math, because trip generation is is generally based on building area for commercial uses. If we took the existing actual volumes and proportionately reduce them by the building area that we're losing, we would get too much of a credit. So what we did for this analysis was just assume there would be no change in the overall shopping center trip generation associated with all of the retail uses, inclusive of moving the Walgreens, because the Walgreens is there, but we're going to be moving it to a new location. So we established a future condition before we added traffic for the residential building. For that residential traffic, we did use ITE data, because there's nothing there to count in terms of residential, so we needed to estimate that. And the appropriate methodology is to rely on the ITE data. And we did perform those estimates for the new residential units that are proposed on site. The IT does have studies that have been adopted by NJDOT for mixed-use developments, because there's an expectation and a reality that in the in the future here, that some of the people who are living on site are going to be using the retail components, visiting the restaurants, shopping at the at the different spaces on site. And so the goal of a mixed-use development is to contain vehicular trips on the property, which means a lesser impact to the adjacent roadway system. So there are credits and calculations that we're able to perform to account for those shared or internal trips between the residences that are proposed and all of the existing retail and restaurant opportunities on site. So there's a net increase in activity associated with the new residences. And that additional traffic was added to the driveways consistent with the activity recorded in terms of left turns, right turns into and out of the site. So it's a net increase of 70 trips during the morning peak hour, 30 trips during the evening peak hour, and 52 trips during the Saturday peak hour. And again, that's a modest credit for internal or shared or captured trips, but it is an increase over the existing recorded driveway volumes through those September traffic counts. I'm sure you've heard the level of service criteria in traffic engineering testimony. Levels of service are how engineers rate intersection and driveway movements, and we perform analyses to determine the the conditions at the driveway intersections before and after traffic is added. One of the interesting components of this study is our understanding of a proposed road diet for North Harrison. And while it hasn't been designed, we did have the opportunity to speak with McMahon representatives to talk about what may or may not happen. And from our analysis, the reduction from two to one lane in each direction on North Harrison will still require, and it would be appropriate to maintain, the left turn lanes on northbound and southbound North Harrison. So while it hasn't actually been designed, I think our analysis may help the municipality to ultimately design what what the roadway configuration will will look like, because we were able to achieve consistent levels of service with with reducing one lane at the Valley Road and site driveway intersection. And and the the delay is really added to the site driveway approach and the Valley Road approach. But overall, we're finding acceptable operational levels of service with the road diet and with the increased traffic entering and exiting the site associated with the site redevelopment. I think at the prior hearing and throughout the the course of this application, the board understands that there will be no changes to the site driveway system. And so the queuing that does occur will continue to occur. But overall, there won't be a perceptible change in driveway operations with the site renovation. And from my perspective, the multiple driveways allow traffic to nicely distribute throughout the corridor and not have a huge impact at one location. So it's it's, I think, with the long frontage and the multiple access points, we will easily accommodate any additional peak hour trip generation associated with the redevelopment of this property. And I think Keith has taken you through the site circulation. From my perspective, I've reviewed the truck circulation, pedestrian circulation. He's going to be speaking later tonight about more of the bicycle circulation. But from my perspective and review of the site plan, I would say that it has been designed in accordance with recommended standards to achieve the appropriate circulation for all modes of transportation. And that would conclude my direct testimony.
Ms. Dolan, you mentioned the overall levels of service, the delay imperceptible amounts. Are we talking less than a second in terms of?
It and it may be one or one or two seconds of of added delay, but not anything that would be considered significant or have, as I said, a perceptible change in the operational characteristics.
And I believe the report indicates everything operates at a level service C or better?
But with the exception of the the one driveway, we do have some some driveway at D, but that's an onsite queuing issue, so it's not impacting the through-moving traffic on North Harrison.
Thank you, Ms. Dolan. Madam Chair, nothing affirmative for Ms. Dolan at this point.
Well, I see Heather Balgawen, the municipalities, and also Jim Purcell. Maybe Jim, you want to?
Madam Chair, just just for the rec, just for the record, we only received the updated report a few days ago, as you know. And we have not had sufficient time to review it. But I think that Heather has has the ability to offer some testimony, so I will I'll let Heather go on, but I haven't seen a report from her. We haven't been able to consult on it. So just just keep that in mind. Whatever Heather's comments are, we haven't haven't had the opportunity to review it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Um, Mr. Taylor, I was going to let Ms. Balgawen go ahead and and testify. Is there's a quick question you have of of Mr. Purcell or?
No, no, my my quick comment is, from my perspective, the major intersection is North Harrison and Turhune. Turhune is a major connector from Snowden Lane all the way to Witherspoon, and so it's heavily trafficked. That is, from my perspective, daily life, the major intersection, not Valley Road, although that's clearly important. That was not considered, for whatever the reason, and I can't comment on what impact, of course, it might make if it were to be considered.
Well, and I I know that the municipality and the staff are looking at circulation in the broader area beyond the envelope, if you will, of this, of what we're looking at tonight with a very sharp eye toward improving pedestrian and bike mobility and ensuring connectivity and creating potential bike boulevards, et cetera. That's probably a conversation for another day, although Mr. Purcell may want to touch on it after Ms. Balgawen is finished. Is that? It looks like he's willing. Heather?
Let's, yeah, let's let Heather go.
Yes, yeah.
Thank you. Thanks. Yeah, just as Jim had mentioned.
I think I think you may need to be sworn in.
We probably should just swear you in. If you can raise your right hand, do you swear the testimony about to give is that will be the truth?
I do.
And if you can just, you're the you're the board's traffic consultant?
I am.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so as Jim had mentioned, we only received this late Monday. So I I didn't have time to prepare a review memo, so. But I just have, I jotted down a couple of questions that I had. When Dolan and Dean conducted the traffic counts at the shopping center, I do not believe that the shopping center is currently at 100% capacity. I know in previous testimonies, it was stated there are some vacancies. And then in some some research that I had done, I believe that there is about 40,000 square feet of avail of vacant space available in the shopping center. So my recommendations is is most likely going to be to to study these driveways and study this traffic signal at 100% occupancy of the shopping center to make sure it's designed and it can handle, you know, the the 200-unit apartments, as well as when the shopping center, they get all the the tenants in that they that they, you know, are hoping for. And it's and it's even, you know, more vibrant and more active than it even is today. So that's I so I don't know if anyone, you know, knows, like, the 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 occupancy, you know, rate, but that's definitely one comment and one question that I had. That that is would definitely affect the the results of the analysis and how, you know, the conditions of the driveway.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Michael.
I was wondering if maybe someone from the applicant's team can talk about whether a shopping center ever has 100% occupancy and and how difficult that is.
I can try, Mr. LePlace, to get an answer to that over the next few seconds here. I, sitting here, don't know the occupancy of the building, and I don't know sort of the go-in vacancy rate at the center, but I'll try and get you that answer. I don't know. Mr. Haas, do you have that?
Yes, the least occupancy is at 90.1%.
Hmm, that's up from where it was when we heard from a from the town's planning consultant to prepare the redevelopment area study, who said that vacancy rate was approaching was between 18 and 20%, I think you said. But but maybe they've got more tenants. I don't.
One or two.
In my mind's eye, I can't think of who that is, but I'm not there every day.
A couple of my, you know, other minor comments would that maybe would be beneficial to include in the report. And I know she she testified, but the queue lengths and making sure that the vehicle queues at, you know, especially the signalized intersection, that they can be accommodated within the available storage lengths and no lane storages need to be lengthened, which, you know, glancing at the analysis, it doesn't appear to be. But I think that would be good just to have, you know, a table in the report noting that. So everyone's able to to see the vehicle queues. That my other comment, and I believe I noted that in my initial review letter, was Grover Park and to the rear of the shopping center. And if any consideration was given to how active that gets with the Little League, or, you know, I know, you know, there's playgrounds and there's the basketball court and and people parking um at the at the rear of the shopping center um and making sure, you know, there is sufficient parking. Um and especially now with the with the two hundred unit apartment building, um pedestrians, you know, walking back and forth from that. Um, you know, I know Little League hasn't been like super active recently because of of the pandemic, but you know, when it's when it's back in full swing, I think that may have um a little bit of of an impact with the existing shopping center. That's just something to consider and and just most likely something I'm I'm probably gonna note in my report.
Thanks, Ms. Balgawen. Are there any questions from board members? Um, for Ms. Dolan, Mr., I mean, Ms. Balgawen? Or Mr. Purcell? Mr. Cohen?
Um, two questions, one relating to the circulation pattern around the Walgreens in particular with the drive-through and the fact that um people who enter at the southwest uh driveway have to travel around the building essentially one and three-quarter times to um to visit that drive-through and whether you looked at that um and had any recommendations of how that circulation pattern might be improved, that was talked about a fair bit at the first meeting, as I recall. And then the second question is just um whether you did any pedestrian uh counts along with the vehicular counts to see what kinds of pedestrian traffic we have coming to the center.
Uh sure, the the first part of the question about the Walgreens drive-through access, um yes, you have to circulate counterclockwise around the building, but the nice thing about this design is that if there is any overflow activity in the drive-through, it's contained within the Walgreens portion of the site. Um and, you know, we've seen things like COVID testing and 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 that type of thing, which isn't or hasn't ever been the norm, and I believe you heard some testimony about the limited drive-through activity. Um but it is appropriate to circulate counterclockwise. I think it's a very clean design. Um and it puts the drive-through away from the prime parking that will be available for the Walgreens. Um uh as to the the pedestrian counts, I believe there were pedestrian counts, and I can provide that specific information. I I know we did classification, vehicle classification counts. Um I would have to go back to the raw data to just double check, and if that is available, I'll certainly provide that to the board along with the queuing calculations that that had been requested by your engineer.
Thanks.
Did you add bicycle counts to that as well?
I think so. I I think all of that was in the count data. I just need to go back to it's a lot, a lot of pages, so if that is available, we can summarize it and submit it for you.
Yeah, that actually was one of my notes. Um one, the count data that's provided in the report in the appendix, um that it's not correct. I don't, it's not like the full um data, so I couldn't check it, but when I spoke with Rihanna from your office, she did note to me that pedestrians and bicyclists were counted and noted for, and actually, they were accounted for in the analysis, so when you have conflicting pedestrians and bicyclists at the intersections and vehicles have to yield to them, um that was noted. I did note in in the synchro reports that they were they were inputted correctly, so they are, they were counted. I think you just have to get the data together.
Yeah, it it's it's a lot of a lot of pages, and I think the submission was ninety-three pages, so um but we can, we can sort through that and get a summary to the board.
And I I think the queuing and the pedestrian counts have an interaction with each other, particularly at the signalized entrance. We've had pedestrian fatalities there, and I think it occurs when you have frustrated drivers who are trying to get through a light, um you know, and and are cutting people off in the crosswalk, so I think looking at all of those things in conjunction with each other would be really helpful.
Okay, agreed. Very real, really, really important. Mr. O'Donnell?
On the subject of pedestrians, I'm also very concerned about uh the Board of Education estimates that a number of uh an increase in the number of schoolchildren will uh be coming from the Avalon Bay uh pedestrian, and most of those schoolchildren leaving in the morning, pardon me, leaving in the morning and coming home in the afternoon will be going to that corner of Franklin at the southwest of the shopping center. Uh and, you know, I don't know about everybody else, but when I was that age, I certainly didn't uh bother with crosswalk signs and uh, you know, the shortest distance between two points was a straight line, which, you know, in most instances would cut right across these parking lots. Um so I hope that there was some consideration given to that. Is can you address that at all?
Well, the there's a there's a very defined um crosswalk from the corner of the, I guess it would be the southwest or the corner of the proposed residential building, and then a convenient sidewalk that takes you straight down to North Harrison, so um the the crossing for children or any pedestrians could be made um before traveling into any parking lot. Uh there's a very, very defined path, and it is direct, so um and it, I think it would be easier to walk along the proposed sidewalk or the the sidewalk on that south uh side of the uh property to get you directly to Harrison. So um from a- and also too, their sidewalk across the building frontage, so I don't see you know, if they if they really wanted to cut across, I I guess, a portion of the parking lot depending upon where they exit. But the the best path is defined with a sidewalk and a crosswalk right at the corner of the proposed residential building.
And and Mr. O'Donnell, to supplement that point, Mr. Cahill is gonna be showing an exhibit to the board that addresses this very issue, the location of existing and proposed sidewalks, and I think it really illuminates this point as to how you navigate the site. So um Ms. Dolan's answered the question, but I think we're gonna be able to put a picture to those words very shortly with Mr. Cahill.
Okay, thank you very much.
Good. Well, maybe that's a good segue.
Okay.
Um, just because I, because we've talked about sort of the broader area, Jim, could you just speak briefly about what the municipality is doing, or maybe this is a councilperson question, I I don't mean to um back you into a corner, but um but both for members of the board and for members of the public, this broader uh ped bike um mobility, especially and safety and the overall circulation considerations given this new development and others proposed on the other side, proposed and approved on the other side of the shopping center.
If I if if I can, Louise, I I'm not going to go to the broader overall Princeton municipality, everything that we're planning, but I can speak to the immediate vicinity of the shopping center as as Ms. Dolan um just mentioned, we are doing a study of the Harrison Street Corridor for for a road diet. Um and uh I'm I'm uh pleased to hear that she agrees that we can get away with taking away a lane, um because that is part of what we would like to do. Um and as you know, there's there are a lot of improvements planned for Turhune um in conjunction with the developments that are taking place there. Um Thanet Circle itself, Thanet Road, Thanet Circle is is being designated a bike boulevard. Um we will have signage and and markings for that. Um we will have uh interconnectivity with that development across Turhune on a raised intersection for traffic calming purposes um that will connect to uh off-road um shared use paths that will connect to the shopping center as well. Um as you probably know, Grover Park itself is designated a, uh Grover Avenue is designated a bike boulevard. Um and we are speaking with the Recreation Department on making improvements in Grover Park for circulation and uh and and hopefully enhancing that from a stormwater um management perspective to uh create some educational um uh educational displays of different types of green infrastructure for residents um at the same time using it for stormwater mitigation um and looking at how we can integrate bike paths and pedestrian paths within the park to make it a better experience. Um that's the local uh things that we're looking at. Turhune uh and uh Turhune and um yeah, I think it's Turhune is is scheduled, um we're putting it on our Turhune from uh Mount Lucas up to Jefferson, at least we're we're putting it on our uh schedule for some repairs and some uh sidewalk and curb ramp uh in- inclusions. Um and there are other infrastructure projects that I don't have off the top of my head.
And yeah, you don't need to go any further. I I I really, really appreciate that overview, and I think that all of those features are gonna be really important and beneficial to the people who live in the new Avalon um homes that we're talking about tonight, so that's part of why I wanted to connect those dots. Mr. Cohen?
I I just wanted to mention one more project, um which is uh we are seeking a Safe Routes to Transit grant for Turhune all the way from Mount Lucas to Meadowbrook, I believe, for sidewalks on both sides. Um so that'll be a nice.
Isn't there a bike lane going in there as well? I thought there was been scheduled for Turhune.
There are bike lanes scheduled for Turhune from Harrison uh eastbound. Yes, that's correct, but these sidewalks are also gonna fill in, fill a nice gap in the network.
And just one more thing, um there will be a multi-use path going in from Turhune that connects the Thanet property um to the shopping center.
Right, yep. Yeah, Jim um mentioned that, I think. Mr. Chow?
Yeah, yeah, so my comment is related to what uh Sax just said. Um I I Ms. Dolan's testimony focused very much on kind of the historical traffic patterns. And I'm I'm very concerned that our future traffic patterns will be very different. We'll we'll have with Thanet up up there, you're gonna have a lot more kids traveling through the shopping center, so I'd like to ask, have you done an analysis about how the traffic pattern will change with Thanet and with all the families and with all the different modes of transportation that are gonna happen? It's not just cars anymore, it's kids on bikes, kids on, you know, scooters, kids walking. Um and I think that's such an important picture that we we have to understand um to supplement this, you know, the circuit circulation uh of the design.
We we were specifically asked to include the traffic from that development. Um and I think that as the um this road diet is designed, um the the data that we've collected uh plus a lot of the the projections from these other traffic studies uh can hopefully be helpful to the the town in really designing um the pedestrian and bike uh connectivity that that will relieve some of the concerns. I think earlier someone said about the, you know, the impatient drivers pushing through an intersection. Um if you bring North Harrison down from two lanes per direction to one, that's a shorter crossing, it's, you know, that that's part of the whole road diet idea is to to get a little bit better um and safer uh travel system, not just to control and maybe uh keep the the vehicles at a lower speed, but also to promote the bike and uh pedestrian safety, so I think it's a little bit of um maybe premature on this applicant's side because it's my understanding that this this is an evolving design, your road diet. But as I said earlier, we can provide the pedestrian and and bike information that hopefully will be helpful uh to further that that road diet design for North Harrison.
Thank you.
Other questions uh of Ms. Dolan or Ms. Balgawen? I don't see any, so um thank you, Ms. Dolan, and uh and thank you too.
You're welcome.
Um, Mr. Hoff, who's next?
Madam Chair, uh Mr. Cahill's actually up next, so good segue for him.
Okay, let me just quickly ask, is he your last um?
We uh after him, it's Mr. Constantine to address the sign variances, and that's it.
Okay, um would board members like to hear from and question Mr. Cahill before taking a break, or would you rather take ten right now? Any any strong preferences?
Yeah.
Let's hear from Mr. Cahill first.
Yeah, I'd rather wait.
Go ahead.
Let's let's power forward.
All right, um there's Mr. Cahill, he's at the bottom of my box, but I don't know where he appears on your Hollywood Squares.
Bottom left for me too, so, Mr. Cahill, you were sworn in last time, am I right?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay.
All right.
And go ahead.
Uh, Mr. Cahill, so at the last hearing, there were a number of issues that were raised by questions from board and professionals relative to the overall site that, you know, we we turned them homework assignments that we went back and and took a look at. Um, I know there's a couple of things that you wanted to discuss, but now that it's fresh on everyone's mind and to Mr. O'Donnell's question, how about we start with this circulation question that we've been looking at, both from the uh pedestrian as well as the uh bicycle circulation on the site?
Okay, so I'm gonna share my screen. And this, Rick, uh is essentially, um sorry, there, hopefully. Everybody can see my screen, I hope. So what I did, what I did is just took the
Before you start, Mr. Cahill, Mr. Regan, I'm, you know, we're gonna supply all these, but let's let's have this marked, uh I think we're up to A three, and this is a uh a single sheet plan, right, Mr. Cahill?
Yes, it and I, we essentially took an aerial and overlaid uh the existing pedestrian bicycle routes um along our site um and with some added some colors, so uh this is entitled Pedestrian Bicycle Routes Exhibit um dated ten one um two thousand um twenty-one, prepared by Bowler Engineering.
So why don't you walk us through the colors?
Sure, so I'm gonna stay out, zoomed out for a few minutes just to, and hopefully you can see this, if they need me to zoom in, I can, but uh in essence, just for reference, north will be to the left side of the page of this exhibit, and you can see North Harrison along the bottom of our page or on our uh western side. So essentially, I highlighted in blue the dotted paths of sidewalk that come across our street frontage and across our property, including into the to Grover Park. And just to give you some numbers, there's um ten thousand um nine hundred and twenty linear feet of sidewalk on this development currently. Ten thousand nine hundred and twenty, that's over two miles of sidewalk. That does include the sidewalk that's along our frontage and right away on North Harrison Street. Um, I also highlighted in different colors the amount of sidewalk that we're modifying, when I say that, improving, reconstructing. Um with that, there's uh in terms of the sidewalk, um we're reconstructing a thousand linear feet, and they're the different colors, so the dark blue is existing. We have the light green, and now I'll start zooming in to show you. This lighter blue along in in between the um existing shopping center and courtyard in the Avalon Building, as well as the sidewalk that's along our southern property line. We have a thousand linear feet of sidewalk that's being reconstructed. Um and then the cyan color or the purplish color, I believe it is, um highlighted, uh is an extra um uh sixteen hundred linear feet of sidewalk. And I mentioned it before, that a couple of the most important pieces that this board has mentioned, and we've heard it again tonight, we heard in our first inning, is A, we're improving the connectivity of the Avalon Bay Building, which will have more pedestrians to get to the park to get the park back to the shopping center. And that is the the sidewalk section that I have out in front on, what I'll say is the 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 northern side of the Avalon Building. That piece of sidewalk doesn't exist. That piece of sidewalk doesn't exist today. The ballparks still have activity, and I am sure there's kids that run through the parking lot to get over to the Rita's Ice. And to the pizza shop, which is right at this south end of the of the building here, right by the new Avalon Building. This piece will provide a safe pedestrian connection to the park for both the Avalon residents. The existing pedestrians that utilize the park that want to walk over to the shopping center and to the retail facility. And it's also signed and striped with crosswalks. So that's a huge improvement. To the existing scenario that doesn't have a piece of sidewalk there, as well as providing a significant safe travelway. That I know many of you have mentioned. The other part of this, and you've touched on it earlier, was two, talking about connecting to Walgreens. And getting school kids from the Avalon Building out to the right of way or North Harrison and to either direction they go, but. I can't disagree at all with the comment that kids are lazy and they probably won't take the 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 most follow the path all the time. So what did we have to do to make that happen is put it in the most convenient spot for kids to go. I can't control, no one in this room can control if someone's gonna cut diagonally across a parking lot, and you can't do anything about that, obviously. So what do we do? The improvement of sidewalk coming out to the right of way, straight shot from the Avalon Doors out to the. Right of way, straight shot over to the sidewalk that's along the south side that could go up. I'll call it diagonal path on the way to school. I want to get my bottle of water or my coffee, the iced coffee that. Maybe sold at Walgreens. You got great sidewalks with crosswalks and signage. That gets you to the Walgreens, an extra sidewalk to get from the Walgreens front door right to the sidewalk in in North Harrison. I don't think there's another path that we could try to do that would provide more or a better, safe. Convenient, accessible route to get the added pedestrians from the Avalon Development to the rest of the shopping center. The proposed Walgreens or over to the park. I think this is a safe plan. Ms. Dolan has reviewed and agreed with with this layout as well. So I think we've really done it. And again, sixteen hundred linear feet of sidewalk added on top of two miles that exists today. So there's significant amount of pedestrian connectivity. It's done in the most convenient. And traveled ways in a safe manner. In regards to the bikes. Again. In terms of what exists today, along our frontage, there is a bike route. There's painted striping in the in the right of way. That obviously exists. There's seventeen hundred linear feet of that along our frontage. Almost fifteen seventeen fifty. We heard you about the comment of getting bikes into the site and back to the park as well as. All of the bikes that are required inside of our building back to the right of way. You all are familiar with walking through the shopping center and where there's corridors and where there's glass doors that swing open. The last thing we want is bikes to come ripping through the shopping center. We do not want them to go that shortest route. Right to the front to the right of way. We want to bring them around. So what I've highlighted here in the green color, I hope you can see. Is a route that we will add to our site plan that'll designate a bike lane on site as well as signage. For the bikes that come out of the Avalon Building, which as the architect testified to would be compliant for the need, the numbers needed. And for storage inside the building, coming out of that exit and out and along the route on the south side of the building. As I mentioned before. The design did consider these additional bikes and pedestrians. We did allow and showed routes for the delivery vehicles, the commercial delivery vehicles to the shopping center. So they do not need to use this same area. So it's an improvement of safety by the elimination of what you may see today as tractor trailers dropping off to some of those tenants. They will not be driving along the southern property line, the closest to the residents along Clearview Avenue. We've accommodated those routes elsewhere. That's a significant improvement to traffic. Just for the the other comment about bike storage, yes, we will be compliant. We will make sure that we have sufficient number. I think there was eleven required for the Walgreens and the additional number for the external bike stalls. We had not shown them on the original submission. On this exhibit, the red circles. Identify the existing twelve locations that occur on site today. The yellow circles. Are where we intend to add additional bike storage for. Bicyclists utilizing the Walgreens, utilizing the remaining NCAP building as well as the park. And the corners of the building, which I think is the appropriate locations that are along travelways that I think would make sense. For pedestrian circulation, excuse me, the bike circulation paths that we anticipate here. So I hope that gives you at least a picture and really. The numbers of how much there really is in terms of sidewalk connectivity across this site, and that is thought out. It has to be safe. We understand that, and I think what we're proposing here, in my opinion, and all my drawings, and legally liable if there's problems when there's on site. Or the lawsuit, we're providing that with this project and this redevelopment. Now, I want to go to.
Wait, one one follow up here?
Yeah.
During the last hearing, there was discussion about, you know, we've got the walking path along the backside of the building. How does that interact with the proposed now designated bike path? What's the relationship between the two?
So the bike, the walkway along the southern property line is to remain in its same location, its same width. And be reconstructed. The bike path is immediately adjacent to it along the roadway that circulates adjacent to that walkway. And and maybe what I'll do too is flip back to. Exhibit A one, which is sheet three in the package, which is the site layout plan. And I, while we've been here, I I Googled on and we heard the other part of this, and I think this shows you, and Rick, I just want to be clear. The sidewalk that's along, that's not the path, is along our drive aisle. That bike path would be adjacent to it to get. Bicyclists from the right of way through the site to the back of the park and or. Out of and in and out of the Avalon Bay Building. Now, I want to point out, I I you can see, and I'll zoom in a little bit further. I wrote some notes here. Because as part of our homework assignment, we have been talking to your engineers specifically about stormwater.
Cahill, just just for the record, Mr. Regan, this was previously what we referred to as sheet three of A one. It's now annotated. So for the record, I guess it'd be best we mark this A four.
Sure.
Sorry, go ahead.
Thank you. So again, I'm gonna reiterate, per the design that's in front of you today. It is compliant with the new stormwater management regulations, the Princeton's current ordinances. And your engineer's letter agrees with that. What the applicant had heard at Sprab as well as at the first hearing was what can we do to go above and beyond? For Princeton for this project. And what we have here, and I'll start with this note here. We've anticipated, and if you may recall, we have a surplus of parking. So what we're doing is eliminating fifteen more additional parking stalls. We've chosen these locations for multiple reasons. A, it provides a larger green space. Which you will see is another note that we're gonna provide a proposed rain garden in this area. Which will be a green infrastructure improvement. It will slow down the water as it filters through the site and exits the site. But this is again, above and beyond what's required because the current design meets it. Okay, this does not create any variance for parking. We're gonna eliminate these stalls. We also feel they're the least utilized or will be utilized for the site. The distribution and location of the balance of the parking stalls will function extremely well and efficient for the retail component as well as the Walgreens. And we don't have a concern with that, but we are gonna be able to reduce impervious coverage again further. And that number now will go up to approximately three thousand five hundred and sixty square feet, which is an increase, increase of. I'll say pervious surface or the decrease of impervious coverage by two hundred and eighty percent of what we had previously. We had about twelve hundred. Now we're up to a total of thirty-five. In addition, you see an area highlighted in yellow. This is again along the southern side of the property. Behind the, I'll say, the Walgreens building and its loading area, where we intend to design a bioretention basin. This also is a green infrastructure improvement. It can handle, what we intend to do is take the roof water from the Walgreens. Which is over ten thousand square feet. Pipe it across the driveway and utilize this area highlighted in yellow for bioretention basin. Again. Above and beyond what's required, but it will slow down the water further. It'll allow for water to to filter. We hope to get a little infiltration. We know those infiltration rates in this area aren't great, but we'll have under drains, which also will just help overall. Slow the water down as it goes through this site in the stormwater management system. All of those things can be improved, as mentioned, without impacting negatively the the existing sidewalk and the sidewalks being reconstructed along the south end. I think we also have opportunity, and I heard you, the chairwoman speak to my landscape architect about incorporating some additional landscaping. And working with Mr. Dovanelski, which we will. And this also has an opportunity. This feature can be also planted. So I don't want it to think we're giving that up. It can be nicer screening, provide some additional screening towards the back of that Walgreens building. The last comment I want to go on was the comment about the slope between the residents on Clearview Roads. Rear yard to our drive aisle. And as I testified at length last time, and our architect confirmed, we have looked at that. We have tried to minimize the grade change. Current situation. It's relatively flat along the area between the back of the properties that the residential properties to the existing drive aisle today. As this building's constructed. And the slope, which is actually higher at those backyards to the finished floor of the of the shopping center. So in essence, the grades currently higher towards the property line, lower towards the building. Now I have to put a finished floor of a building in and extend it outward. I have to lower to allow the circulation roadway to go around it. We're cutting that three to four feet. It's not anything horrific. The slope of three to one on that buffer area is safe. It is practiced, it's in common standard practice to be a three to one slope, to be maintained for lawn cutting as well as planting. As my landscape architect testified to as well, we can and will have landscaping along that area. Without a concern of a three to one slope. Also, that slope being lower, the roadway, the line of sites, the hill and slope. All very gentle. It may sound like, oh, it's lowering three feet. That's nothing relative to driving a vehicle. Because you experienced that today on site when you drive from one side of that parking lot to the other. You'll experience the same thing here. So it's not new. It's just in a different location. So there's no concern with that from an engineering standpoint, from a safety standpoint, from a stormwater management standpoint. All of these things are redevelopment, positive improvements. In terms of this shopping center and designing in accordance with good design practices to allow for both. Improved stormwater management, improved pedestrian circulation, as well as bicycle circulation. Rick, do you have anything else to follow up with for me?
No, that I was on mute. I apologize. Just so, wanted to be clear on one thing, because again, back to the issue of the proposed bike path. One of the things we heard during the last hearing was, well, why don't we just make that path along the boundary just wider? Is that something you looked at?
I did, and I think it's best described, and you don't see the contour lines on this exhibit, but if you look at sheet C five oh one. Which is the drainage and utility plan that shows both the grading, the utilities, as well as the landscaping all overlaid. You know, if I try to widen that sidewalk. I'm getting closer to the property line of those residents. Now my three to one slope gets steeper. Or I disturb all the way back to the property lines and have to cut all of the existing vegetation. We're preserving the existing vegetation by being able to keep the sidewalk its width as it is today. And allowing for a safer bike route within the roadway. If you do the wider, I can't give you both. Something's gonna give. And that means further disturbance, cutting down existing vegetation. Potentially even a retaining wall, which again provides a another area of, in my opinion, then. You have a concern for safety if anybody does walk along there. So we're avoiding all of that. In the sense and still providing a better connection to the back of the site. For both bikes and pedestrians.
And fair to say that with the expansion of that path as the alternative, you're sort of eating into the stormwater mitigation measures that you just walked through?
Sure. Now, now you're gonna be increasing impervious coverage. I mean, that's, you look along that side. Over seven hundred and seven hundred and fifty feet. So times three feet wide, now all of a sudden, your numbers aren't gonna be there. So, you know, we're trying to, we're trying to bring a better design and go above and beyond for stormwater management, which we heard numerous times. And have discussed with your professionals, this is how we're gonna get there, and we're still gonna provide the safe pedestrian and bike circulation.
And to the point of, well, let's just take the path and go the other direction. Let's go closer to the Avalon Building. What then happens to the cartway?
Yeah, then then all of a sudden your drive aisle gets smaller. You know, you you we've, we want to make sure that we have adequate circulation for two-way drive aisles so that we can. Again, make sure that we have safe vehicle circulation with the both the pedestrian and the bike path.
Thank you, Mr. Cahill.
Mr. Cohen?
Yeah, I'd just like to understand this bike. Path. I I you've used a couple of terms during your presentation. I think you said bike lane at one point. Bike path at another point. It sounds like you want bicycles going both directions, east and westbound. On that southerly side of the road. Which. With a real bike lane, you know, you could make it wide enough to have bi- bidirectional travel, but. I I just, can you explain a little bit more what you mean when you talk about a bike path?
Sure, we're we are going to provide painted symbols within the roadway and signage to direct. The residents coming out of Avalon and any bicyclist that's coming from the right of way on the route to use. So again, it's just.
You're talking about Sherwood's?
Yes.
I I do want to follow up on that last question that Mr. Hoff asked about what if you widen the sidewalk? Into the roadway. What's the width of your roadway right now?
It's twenty-four feet.
So twelve-foot lane's pretty generous. You could go down to twenty-one feet. Add three feet to that side path, not increase your impervious coverage at all and calm the traffic as well. But what would you think of that?
Again, I think in the the areas of concern is when I get towards the rear of the site and the turning. I want to make sure that there's clear line of sight there. So as that gets narrower, that's the the area of any type of concern in that spot. It also is the area that is, I'll say, technically the tightest with our rear property line or the southern, the southern property line. So, you know, within that, we would have to make sure there's no concern. You know, within that, we would have to make sure there's no concern for vehicles circulating around there. You can see we do have parallel parking stalls along that side for the park. And that there is some striping to make sure that there is that adequate radius. So that's the, that's one of the reasons why we kept that width twenty-four in and around there. Um, we could look at, you know, work with it i- in certain areas, but I don't know if that's my area of concern.
Yeah, I think, yeah, as you can see, the, the path, the side path actually moves away from the roadway. At that corner as well. So you, you may have some. Room to work with. Uh, to, to try and figure that out. I, I would encourage you to take a look at that.
I, I would too. Uh, David, uh, I see you muted yourself again, so I assume that's. That's all you had for now. I, well, brings up a question that, oh, I'm sorry.
I'll just make one more observation, which is, you know, you, you've noted that you don't want people riding through the courtyard. Um, there are already issues with that. Uh, I know there's signage saying no cycling in the courtyard, but they're regular. Regularly are people riding through the courtyard and I guarantee. With this new two hundred units of residential here. That that will increase if you don't give a really attractive. Safe alternative for cyclists, like a widened path over on the south side.
Yeah, I agree with that and, um. Regarding that, uh, corner, the southeast corner, you pointed out the, the sightline. Issues and the, the tightness of that and I, I, I worry about that. I worry about how accustomed people are now to being able to see everything that's coming from the other direction and the. The, the very, very changed, um. Circ- circumstance that they'll be. That'll be in place when this is built. And I wondered whether anyone had considered. Basically making that into a. A stop sign, a, a, a left turn, uh, you know, right turn, left turn, ba- basically forcing. Uh, or asking people to s- stop before they. Turn to go near which, uh, to go, what, if they're, if they're heading. Eastbound, um.
We did, we did.
Before turning north.
We did look at that and we looked at the, uh, the line of sight for safety. Um, I think again with, with the crosswalks that we have and the stop for pedestrians, uh, in the crosswalks will slow traffic down as well. Um, it'll be, it'll be signed for a slower speed limit as well in that area. So, you know, i- in those things, that's what we do to make sure of those things are safe.
Um. Do I understand or recall correctly that there's a. An entrance and exit on the south side of, um, the Avalon building. Sort of in the middle, right near where the crook in the, in the. Face of the building is, is that correct?
Yes.
So it occurred to me that. A lot of folks will be coming out of the building there and might want to go straight across the street to get to the. Nicer sidewalk on the other side where the landscaping is. And they have to go bef- in order to get over to that other path or to the park, they have to follow. Right alongside the building for a long way before there's a. Sidewalk. And I was wondering whether you could ha- before there's a crosswalk. And I was wondering. Whether anyone had considered. A crosswalk, a raised crosswalk, which would also be a traffic calming device. Right near where folks will, many, many folks will be coming and going, you know, maybe with pets, et cetera, and. Really want to get across the street sooner than they can. Uh, by taking the nearest crosswalk.
Um, we can look at that. It's, one of the things that we try to do is put it in a location that is obviously. A great line of sight and, and, you know, you're not worried about too close to a turn. Um, so we could look at doing something like that there. Uh, and I'll also confer with if that area. Do we expect to have it as, as many people exiting there as in say, for instance, other areas out the front? Towards, um, the, the path that we've described as going back from, uh, to the park as well. But if it's going.
Kids going to school are gonna, and people going into town, many of them will be very likely to go out that. Exit and, and to me, you're, you're just asking for a lot of jaywalking there because they're just. I think a lot of people are just not gonna. Not gonna go all, all the way down to the cross, to the existing crosswalk. So I. I don't know how other people feel about that. I'm just throwing it out there because it, it seemed to me like, um. It was just begging for a, a crosswalk there.
I'll, I'll just jump in, I'll just jump in please and, uh, say that, uh, first of all, I appreciate Mr. Cahill, this exhibit, uh, this shows the, uh, the, the new sidewalks. I think this is a. A very good, uh, visual and helping a lot. And, uh, Louise, I was also going to, uh, ask that exact same. Uh, question. Uh, so I do agree with you totally on that.
Okay.
And thank you, Owen, for saying thank you because I should have started with that as well. I really do appreciate the additional green infrastructure BMPs. You know, the attention to these bike and pet and safety issues. That, that's a big deal. It's important. We appreciate the, the homework that you've done and. And all of that.
Thank you.
The, the removal of truck traffic from this end of the. Um. Or at least the removal of the, of the great big truck traffic from this end of the, of the shopping center. I assume it means that all of the truck traffic will then use the intersection at Valley Road. The, the current signalized intersection, or is there going to be some other entrance that the trucks? Will use. I, I'm concerned about. I understand the wisdom of removing trucks, big, big delivery trucks from this. End of the. Of the complex, but I'm worried about what it means for the rest of the complex, including that difficult ingress and egress and. You know, people backing up to get, uh, out of the. Uh, shopping center situation. Can you speak to that?
Sure. So in regards to what I described and, and submitted in terms of truck turning exhibits as well. Is that the, the trucks, how they enter and exit, really, there's no need for them to change what, what's going to end up happening. What's gonna end up happening, meaning that if they're coming in currently for the deliveries in at the signalized intersection and they circulate to the. Uh, to the rear of the site or closest to the, um. Uh, the park, you can see that the loading along the buildings. Then it turns in the exit lane out back to the, back to the outer loop road. Um, so that, you know, before may have circulated back to the front. But do I know if they used one of the driveways, the, the exit drives that has a right in, right out like that, oh, excuse me, an exit. Um, a left and a right exit. We're not going to prevent trucks from not being able to do that. Then the nice thing about this site is it has numerous exit points. And it disperses traffic well. And, you know, the, from an operational standpoint, that won't change much. The only truck really, you know, circulating with, from the Walgreens, as I mentioned, coming along that front. Um, and if anyone needed to do a delivery along those front, uh, stores there, it can still do that path. And if they chose to exit from the first driveway exit or out to the signal, they still can do it as they do today and it is still a safe move.
Well, that's just exiting the, uh. That's just exiting. How do they, they, they all have to get in at the, at the signalized intersection, right? Where they, they don't have to do that now.
No, they, they, they still can e- enter by, and again, I'll use the Walgreens delivery. They can come in that spot because that's where they're loading and then, and circulate around the building as I described before, and then you utilize and exit the site. So again, when you start looking at, and again, truck drivers, if they're bringing larger vehicles in, are going to take the path of least resistance. That makes it easy. What I'll say easy, meaning a larger tr- uh, radiuses to turn. So that what's, you know, the larger vehicles really utilizing, uh, the grocer on the, on the, uh, the north end of the site. Yeah, they're going to be coming into that signal, circulating around and coming back to that signal as they do today. And again, the, the vehicles that may have circulated around the building in an entirely, uh, clockwise direction. Won't do that. They'll circle back and come back to that signal. So either way, they're going to enter. Um, where they entered today and or exit where they do. The directional change is that we're not going to allow them to drive along that drive aisle on the south side. For the, for the retail facility.
Mr. Purcell?
Yeah, um, I would like to add on to that. Um, I'm, I'm not in, in agreement with Mr. Cahill because I think that is a. Traffic engineer's responsibility to determine what the truck movements are today and what the truck movements will be. Uh, in the future. Um, and since I, as I said, I, we haven't seen, I haven't been able to read the entire ninety-three page report. If that's not in there, I would like the traffic engineer to do that analysis because I do know that today. Large. Eighteen-wheelers, WB forty's at least. Enter through that south entrance, circle around where the new building is to make deliveries. And if they do use the Valley Road entrance, they circle back out. And as Mr. Cahill just said, well, they can loop back around. I'd like to know where they're looping back around and going back out the valley. Entrance, especially when the valley entrance backs up with a large queuing of, uh, mo- of, uh, passenger vehicles. So yes, I think, uh, 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 an analysis of the. Truck delivery traffic is absolutely necessary. And if it's not done right now, they need to add it to their traffic report.
Well, I was just going to state though, from an operational standpoint. You know, the only, and again, Walgreens is there today. And the deliveries and where they enter and the driveway along the south side can accommodate that vehicle.
I, I recognize that, Keith, but you, what you're, what you're doing now is saying that. The large delivery vehicles are now going to be crossing in front of. The shopping center that they didn't use today. And in between the parking where people are, are, where pedestrians are walking. The new residential development has changed the truck delivery movement pattern. I would like to see an analysis of that. What is the impact because of that? Change in traffic patterns within the shopping center itself. You can, and we can talk all day about how trucks will be doing it, but I don't see an im- a traffic analysis. Uh, um, showing me what the impact is. How many trucks are we talking about today? I did hear the traffic consultant say that they did. With their counts, they did classifications. So they should have, have that information and be able to do that analysis to show. How many trucks are going to be driving? From that Walgreens, that the new Walgreens area over in front of the shopping center and looping around the back to make deliveries. I don't know if that's true, but I don't know because I haven't seen a traffic analysis that shows me that.
Yeah, and I, I, so yeah, I think that's just a real important thing for us to fully understand. I'm not arguing that trucks need to be. Where you're saying they shouldn't be. But I do think it's, it's going to really create a set of issues, um. With every single truck having to pass through one way or the other, that most congested intersection. Uh, which is also where the buses, the, the public New Jersey Transit buses are. Um, and how they will, how and where they'll turn around to get back. Out again. So anyway, um. That'll be in the, in the report that we. The, the next report that we get from Ms. Dolan, is that, is that correct?
Again, I think it's, it's an operational statement, but if that's where that statement needs to be added, it can be added.
Um. Can you talk a little bit about the, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Chow? Go ahead.
I'll wait.
I was going to ask about the pedestrian. Um. Uh, walkway from the park. Basically, I think of it as going from the park to Rita's. Um, the one that is right adjacent to the, to the, uh, entrance for all the cars into the, um, covered parking. To the parking deck and. Um. And like you said, it's just hugely important that that be, uh, really safe and it's great that y'all are thinking about that. I'm just wondering. Wh- what are the specific features that you're building into it to make sure that it's? Uh, safe? I mean, you're going to have bollards? Are you, how, how specifically are you going to separate? Those kids and families from. Uh, you know, one of the most, one of the trickiest and most. Uh. You know, potentially. Dangerous. Places for, um. For pedestrians and cars encountering each other on the site.
Sure. I, I, I don't think it's dangerous in a sense. Um, like as I mentioned, it, it's occurring today, uh, and really how we're laying this out. Providing this in a large grass island. We've talked about centering that sidewalk. So that there's grass on either side of that, um. Walkway. So there's space. Um, that's one of the items we have talked about to do. I know we want to make sure to, we have some trees planted there as well. So we, you know, the, the more we take up with the sidewalk, the less area we have for plant, planting, but. I think we have some balance there to at least center that sidewalk along that walkway. Um, again, the circulation and flow of traffic there. Uh, there's clear line of sights. There's sidewalks there. It'll be signed and striped. You, you know, I, I think it's going to be a safe. In terms of operation. Uh, I don't believe there's necessary to put bollards. Um. In that or along that run. Um. You know, I, I, I don't think there's much more to do there.
Well, I, I don't know, uh, you know, exactly what the best practice would dictate and maybe what you're talking about is, is exactly that. I just think it needs to be. You know, very, very carefully done. The movement is happening now, but it's under. A completely different circumstance with. You know, uh, well, I don't even need to describe how different it is. So is that a five-foot wide?
In this area, in this area, it's a six-foot wide sidewalk. And, and the island is about eleven feet wide there. So our thought was if we centered it, you'd have, you know, three feet of grass, six-foot sidewalk. Um, two feet of grass type of thing.
Uh, Mr. Dobber Milske, did I see that? Did I see your hand up?
Yes, thank you. Sorry, I, I arrived late to the meeting. Thank you, Chairman Chair. Um, I had a comment specifically on that, what you were just talking about. I, I think what I heard was trying to make it safe, which I appreciate. But that you were trying to. Get the walk and the trees. And I can tell you, centering the walk will not allow the trees to be there. So you, you're going to have to make a choice either. I, the, the way to get the trees is, is to put the sidewalk on one side or the other and the trees on the other side. So if you see the threat, uh, the danger being the cars entering and exiting. The garage, which hopefully will be fairly slow because this is a short stretch, then I'd put the trees on that side of the walk. Um. Uh, what currently on the plans that were submitted, the trees were on the parking lot side of the walk. But I think centering it will just end up with a sidewalk and two dead strips of grass. Um, so I don't think from a landscape point of view, that's not a good solution. Um. That's all I wanted to add.
That's helpful. Thank you. That sounds like the right approach to me. Um, are there?
Dan, did we, did we swear Dan in last time?
We did not, or no, I don't think so.
Thank you. Dan, do you swear the testimony about to give is the truth and the testimony that you gave?
Yes, Dan Dovilinski, landscape architect.
Thank you. And Dan, quickly, while, while, um, we have your face on the screen.
I'm not going anywhere now.
Asked earlier about the, um, any challenges related to, um, new plantings along where they've regraded. Uh, to lower the roadway, uh, which I'm not arguing with. I'm just, um, wondering. Well, the, the time will come when your advice will be sought on, uh. Not just the appropriate species of trees and shrubs, but also I, I think it'll be really important, given how much regrading there is. I, I think it'll be really important, given how much regrading there is, to make sure that the planting conditions are optimal and that they're not, you know, having to faced with planting trees in a scraped away clay. Environment that. You know, lowers the, the life expectancy of the tree to near zero.
I think, I, I think I understand your question. I did, I, I, I was, I had to administer another meeting somewhere else and I, but I was able to listen in a little bit to some of the landscape architects' testimony. I did not hear the questions afterwards. Um, there was kind of a spot in the other meeting where I could listen in a little. Um, so I think that is probably from my report, one of the biggest concerns I had is that buffer. Uh, the last phase of work that occurred at the shopping center, there were a number of trees added to that buffer then. Uh, to buffer the parking lot from the residential area. Um, and I think it's the testimony and, and what is actually there. There's a mix of evergreen and deciduous trees that are fairly mature. Near the residential property lines, there are gaps in those, in that landscape, that older mature landscape. Uh, we were able to add, I think it was forty-nine evergreen trees to supplement that with the previous phase and now those trees will be removed with this uh, work because of the grading and moving the road slightly, which is, uh, was occurring. So I think what you're going to have is the walk, a slope up and then back to existing grade. And the key will be to get the, any supplemental landscaping into that existing grade and not necessarily on the slope. So, um, and so it's going to come down to what are the, what, what type of landscape can you get in there? It's also complicated by the overhead wires that are there. Um, so I'm guessing what you're going to end up with are evergreen trees that grow, don't quite grow as tall as some of what's there. Uh, maybe evergreen shrubs, uh, that will get large. Um, you know, large like fifteen, sixteen feet tall with maturity. Um, and looking at things like that. So I think that's, I think if the board wants to make that a condition, uh, that to work it out with the landscape subcommittee as frequently can occur. Uh, that's something I think I did hear from the applicant that they were willing to, to work with that. Um, I think that's amenable if the board agrees, I think. But I think we did last time was we had a, a, a number, like a quantity up to fifty trees or, or equivalent thereof or something like that. So it was quantifiable for both sides. Um, so that, that probably would be something to consider.
Yeah, Mr. Alexander was, um, generous in noting that, you know, he would be conferring with you and deferring to your judgment about appropriate species and all of that stuff. I, I wasn't really understanding that new plantings wouldn't happen along the new slope and would rather, but it makes sense. What you just said makes sense to me. Um, whether this goes to the landscape committee or just to you. Um, I, I'm not sure whether, you know, given the, the MOU, the developer's agreement and all that stuff, whether it's appropriate to go to the committee, but it'll require your attention for sure. Uh, Mr. Taylor?
No, thank you. I was just waving. No, no, I'm sorry. Not to speak.
Okay. Mr. Chow?
Yeah, I still had, um, I, I apologize. Or, Mr. Cahill, thanks for, uh, uh, adding the bike amenities and thinking through all that. Um, as, could you pull up your map again with, with the, the bike paths, particularly the green one? And and then I kind of want to follow up on what Mr. Cohen had said. The, the, the carway is twenty-four feet wide and how wide is the sidewalk?
Uh, five feet.
And when you marked it off by green, it, it is, I, I didn't understand this before, but there are sharrows then, you're the
Yes.
The bike. The bike paths are marked on both sides of the road?
Uh, it was intended to be on the one side.
So if somebody's going clockwise around, you know, you, you, uh, uh, somebody's biking out of the garage and going clockwise on the bike path, they're going against traffic, correct?
Yes.
Nuts.
Yeah, we can, we can add sharrows on both sides to essentially have it a two-way.
Okay, so, okay. All right, I, I, I really hope that you can think of making the sidewalk combined or change the sidewalk into a shared use path. That's whatever's, you know, however wide it needs to be. I think, what is it, like eight to ten feet wide? Cause I, I'm really concerned with kids biking uh, on the shared road, uh, around that tight corner. And with, uh, with what I believe will be much increased traffic around, um, the shopping center.
Narrow the road as Mr. Cohen was suggesting?
Yes.
I do get nervous with a road that's, when you get into twenty-one feet in width, it's you know, there's design standards for twenty-four feet for a reason, for two-way travel. Um, so I, I, I'm, I'm not going to commit to being able to do that.
Well, as Mr. Cohen pointed out, there's more, you do have some latitude around that corner to make it a little bit wider for turning movements. And narrower streets have a traffic calming effect. I mean, I think the twenty-four foot width is, well, whatever. I think you could probably make it work.
Yeah, I think we are from our bicycle committee, um, president about, uh, street widths. Uh, and she, she knows the design standards very well. Uh, she's in the, she's in the audience. All right, tha- thank you, Mr. Gail.
Yeah, I just, maybe I'll chime in real quickly. I mean, I think that, um, you know, it's lane widths as, as low as ten are, are doable. I mean, I think that, you know, if if you're really nervous, I mean, maybe you can kind of compromise at like twenty-two, but I think that it's, it's totally um, reasonable and I think there's plenty of precedent. Um, I think that, you know, to David and Phil's points. I think that, um, you know, it would be good to have a little bit of extra space in that path for you know, children and maybe bikers that don't feel comfortable on the road, but I, I do think that it's I, I think it probably, even though I'm not crazy about sharrows, you know, it could be, um, good to also make it clear that the road is also a, a place for, um, those cyclists that, you know, feel comfortable riding on the road. And, um, you know, I don't know if you can, um, set like a speed limit, but you know, having maybe signs that say like the speed limit is like you know, it's ten or fifteen miles per hour. So that way drivers know that, you know, this isn't a place where they should be speeding. You know, it's a place where, you know, it's okay if a bike is in front of you and you, you have to wait. So, I don't know. I, I, those are just my thoughts on that.
Thank you.
Uh, other, other questions for Mr. Cahill from board members? I am not seeing any any questions. Do we want to, um, then hear from Mr. Constantine before breaking or do you want to break now? It's nine forty-two. Seems like a good time for a break.
Yes, I think it's time.
Agreed, Madam Chair.
Agreed, Madam Chair.
Okay, um, I'll see everybody back here at, uh, as close to nine fifty as you can make. Eight minutes. We'll make it ten for, if we have to. Thanks. Okay, thanks. Um, before we hear from Mr. Constantine, uh, Ms. Philip, can you just give us a quick overview of the number of, uh, panelists and attendees we have?
Uh, we have a total of fifty-six participants. That's twenty-nine panelists and twenty-seven attendees.
Okay, great. Thank you. Mr. Hoff, you want to introduce Mr. Constantine?
Uh, I do. Let's get Mr. Constantine sworn and qualified and then I, I want to address the variance issue just globally before we turn it over to him, but let's get him lined up.
Mr. Constantine, can you raise your right hand? You swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth or will be the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Constantine, could you provide your professional educational background, please, for the board?
Sure, I have a BA with high honors in urban studies from Rutgers University. I have been a licensed planner in the state of New Jersey since nineteen eighty-eight. Uh, I've also appeared before many, uh, planning zoning boards and, uh, governing bodies in the state of New Jersey as well as practicing planning in thirty states and about two dozen municipalities in Canada. Over the past thirty-five years. I'm a principal of planning with L R K. Uh, we have multiple offices, including in Princeton and Philadelphia.
Madam Chair, I'd offer Mr. Constantine as a licensed professional planner qualified to testify in the field of planning.
And no stranger to this board, we accept his qualifications.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, before I, I turn it over to Mr. Constantine to talk about the variance, I think it'd be important to just identify what variances we have at play here. Um, there's an original letter that talks about a multitude of variances because the language of the ordinance refers to signage being permitted along a frontage. Um, and when we saw that review letter, it, it triggered a number of variances on the residential building as well as on the what we're calling the end cap and the Walgreens building. Uh, between the last meeting and this meeting, we forwarded to the attention of Mr. Regan as well as Mr. Laplace and, um, Mr. Bridger, there was, there's been prior approvals on the shopping center which treated the term frontage differently and specifically, for lack of a better understanding. I, if you fronted an interior or an interior drive or a roadway, the board considered that frontage such that, um, you wouldn't have a variant situation for the Walgreens building, for instance, if you had signs on three sides. Provided those three sides faced a road or interior drive. So we got a revised letter today that I believe supports that interpretation of the code. But I don't want to speak for Mr. Purcell or Mr. Bridger on that point. But I think it's important, at least for this board to know, and for, for me frankly, what variances we're actually dealing with and need to present proofs on. Um, and one other point that was not in that review letter is the residential building, as the board knows, is subject to the redevelopment plan. And the redevelopment plan specifically at page nineteen has provisions for signage. And it provides that the signs in the district shall be limited pursuant to the regulations herein in lieu of other provisions contained in Article eleven zoning. So the redevelopment plan supersedes the typical sign provisions of the code. And all it says is that signs shall be designed in a manner that is complementary to the building's architecture and visually cohesive with the overall project design aesthetic. So our view is that the residential building is subject to that standard. While clearly the Walgreens and the End Cap building are subject to the terms of the general sign provisions in the code. So that, that issue was not addressed in the memo of today. And really it makes a difference for us as to what proofs we're putting on with respect to the signs on the residential building. So I'll.
So I would defer.
Go ahead, Mr. Bridger, sorry.
Uh, to Mr. Regan on the redevelopment agreement, if that's what it says. I mean, there is no language in the current code for signage for that type of building. Um, so I'll be guided by his guidance on that.
Probably swear you in first.
I'm sorry, yes, sir.
That's okay. Did you swear the testimony you're about to give is, will be the truth?
Yes, I do. Thank you.
Thank you. I, I will address, Derek, before you get into the other ordinance, uh, the other variances, uh, with respect to the, the land use ordinance. Uh, I do agree after, after looking at this more closely, uh, with Mr. Hoff, that I, I do believe at least it's my opinion that the, the redevelopment plan, why, it clearly supersedes the, the underlying zoning. Uh, and, 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 and the redevelopment plan as it relates to the residential building, which is really what the plan is limited to. Um, you know, again, it supersedes the zoning, so I don't believe any variances are necessary for the residential building. As to the remainder of the site, I, I think that there are some, and I know you clarified that, uh, in a memo today, and maybe you can just address that.
Sure, be glad to. Start with the Walgreens building. The northern elevation has two facade signs, uh, referencing Walgreens and, and pharmacy. And section ten B two ninety A G permits only one facade sign per, per frontage. And it, section two ninety-seven also regulates the maximum size of a facade sign to twenty-four feet, whereas the proposed Walgreens sign is seventy-four square feet. So there are two variances for that. There's also a proposed drive-through sign and, uh, as we learned tonight, an exit sign that are both necessary, but they're not really recognized in the code or contemplated. So there's a variance required for that. And, uh, the refurbished existing re- retail building, um, it was unclear when I looked at it, it just said signage, but it looks like it's, uh, one twenty-four square foot sign per, per proposed store. So that would be in compliance as well. So um, that just leaves the new residential building. Um, there's really two variances for the Walgreens and I'll, I think the residential building has, uh, been settled by Mr. Regan.
So, so Madam Chair, with that qualification, not recognizing any variances for the residential building, I don't know that Mr. Constantine is going to address that. Um, and with the clarification that the signs for the existing retail building contemplated two tenants and the size of the signs are proposed to be twenty-four square feet. I don't believe there's a variant situation for either of those. So I'd like Mr. Constantine to focus his testimony solely on the Walgreens signs that Mr. Bridger just identified, both from the perspective of multiple signs on one frontage and one of those signs being larger. And then he'll also touch on the exit and drive-through signs that, uh, we view more as wayfaring, but let's throw them in the mix and, uh, have him address those as well.
Sounds good. Thank you.
All right, so Mr. Constantine, with that introduction, why don't we skip right to the Walgreens sign that we've, uh, already called out on the northern elevation? I believe you have an exhibit that you can refer to. I believe it's the same one. Is it the same one that, uh? Uh, Mr. Hoff said?
Uh, yes.
So that would be exhibit A two that was previously referred to today. You can bring that one up.
Do you want me to share on that one, Rick?
Yeah, you, you can do that. That's well beyond my capabilities.
Okay, is that visible?
Yep.
Great.
Yes.
Okay, so, um, with regards to the, uh, the Walgreens signage, which you've had testimony from the architect on. I, I think it's worth noting that, um, it's really been designed as a complete architectural composition. Um, uh, it's a, it's attractive architectural design and signage. It fits in, complements and enhances the existing Princeton Shopping Center. Um, the architecture uses a combination of wall materials, uh, mixing them, including some landscape to soften. Projecting canopies for depth and shadow, uh, and then includes signage within that overall holistically designed composition. And then there are murals that have been used as well to enliven the bu- building uh, and visually communicate an important value of the Princeton community, that is that the arts live at Princeton Shopping Center. Uh, in fact, there's more space for the murals on, um, the facades than there are signage. Uh, which again helps downplay, uh, the signage to some degree in this holistic composition. And the location and the size and the dimensions of the sides are scaled to be proportionate with each face of the facade on which they sit. When you take it again in its entirety, uh, and look at it that way, and that really goes to and addresses. Um, well, and I should add one other thing, and some of the signage also serves the purpose of, uh, wayfinding with respect to the drive-through, um, as well as for pedestrians, uh, from all directions. So we apply what's been proposed to the So, we apply what's been proposed to the criteria for a flexible C, C2 variance in this case. The benefits of the deviation have to substantially outweigh any detriment. And in this case, what's proposed here advances the master plan of Princeton. It also advances the redevelopment plan that this application is part of in its entirety. The 1996-2001 master plan indicated a primary objective, the land use plan element, is to stimulate the economic well-being of the established commercial centers of Princeton. Jump up to the 2007 reexamination plan, which identified the need to review the zoning at the Princeton Shopping Center. There were signals that there was a need to do things differently here. The 2017 reexamination plan identified as a key issue, ensuring an economically healthy shopping center. So, the rehabilitation, reinvestment, redevelopment at the shopping center in this application, this entire application advances these goals in the master plan, and part of that obviously is the relocation of the Walgreens in the design that's been proposed here. One other goal from the master plan from 96 to the 2001 goals was to encourage the use of sound urban design principles in redevelopment projects to enhance the character and appearance in developed areas, which obviously includes this. So, for those reasons, this application advances those elements of the master plan. In addition, this application in its entirety, including the Walgreens, advances the planning principle, goals, and objectives and the design criteria that the municipality contained in the 2021 Inclusionary Residential Redevelopment Plan. And although that criteria is specifically applicable here, it's worth noting how this application interplays with it, which includes creating renewed activity and vitality to revitalize the existing commercial uses at the shopping center, promoting pedestrian-friendly and walkability with mixed-use development at the shopping center, and to also provide for harmonious design in terms of the composition of buildings. So, the purposes of the municipal land use law would be advanced by a deviation from the zoning ordinance, including the following purposes of zoning related to these signs. One, to promote a desirable visual environment through creative development techniques and good civic design and arrangement. And two, to encourage the coordination of the various public and private procedures and activities shaping land development with a view to more efficient use of land, and certainly the redevelopment effort that's been a public-private effort of the municipality and this property owner and developer would meet that criteria. We also have to address the negative criteria relative to this application for signage. And that is that the deviation can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good, and that the granting of the deviation will not substantially impair the intent and purpose of the master plan and the zoning ordinance. I think I've already addressed the master plan, and I believe it's not, will not impair substantially the intent and purpose of the master plan. It's also worth noting how this, the proposed signage on the Walgreens building relates to its immediate context along North Harrison Street. There are multiple signs that can be found. In fact, along the long north face of the existing Princeton Shopping Center building, there are 13 existing signs by vacant storefronts, so there actually could be 18. One storefront has been combined, 19. There's potential for 20-plus signs along that long face, plus the end cap with chopped and Verizon, plus PNC and Nomad. So, there is a lot of signage relative to retail in this environment in the shopping center that's there today. And so, I don't believe that what's proposed, the way it's been designed, and the fact that it's been holistically incorporated on well-detailed buildings, including murals and other things that basically help to counterbalance the signage in isolation, this will not impair the intent and purpose of the master plan in this own ordinance.
And Mr. Konstantin, you heard the, and again, while you're not going to find this in the purposes of the MLUL, you heard the chairman, the chairwoman earlier make reference to the fact that you have dual signs, one of them being pharmacy, that the word pharmacy itself lends itself to additional benefits, that being, you know, language barriers that may exist for people coming to the center, whereas pharmacy is a much more recognizable term. You agree with that? Just observation?
I do, and that would obviously promote the purposes of zoning in terms of promoting the public welfare.
And to that point, I was going to hit that next, in terms of public welfare, health, and safety, the additional signs for the drive-through, and we talked about them, both the drive-through notation as well as the exit sign, they would technically be characterized as signs. I call them wayfaring signs, but they're signs nonetheless. Don't you believe them to be almost necessary in a building that has a drive-through?
Yes, and I have noted that the, those wayfinding signs are important for traffic and vehicular circulation and safety, as well as pedestrians, because we have to make sure that the cars move slow, safely, know where they're going, and it also helps to promote pedestrian safety as well.
And you touched on the scale, and you know, if you just look at the proposed Walgreens signs and you just looked at the numbers in isolation, you're permitted 24, and the proposed square footage here is 74. Initial reaction might be that it's well beyond an appropriate size, given the code. But given the building itself, you believe that that square footage that is proposed is in more in line with the scale of the building as presented?
It is, and first of all, and one clarification on the square footage, because the calculation is done by boxing the outermost dimensions of the letters, the actual typeface doesn't include the full 74 square feet, it's less within that. But it's absolutely proportionate to that storefront and within the overall facade as a composition. Now, I would also note that, you know, Princeton Sign Code, whenever the 24-square-foot was set, I think it was back in the 1960s at some point, because historically on Nassau Street, if you go way back and look at what was there 100 years ago, there were lots of merchants that proportionately filled the sign bands on their stores in town. But then later, when the Sign Code was put in place today, we have many signs that are actually much smaller and don't fit proportionately. So, from one design and historic perspective, you know, signs really work best when they do fit the architectural proportions of the building. They feel right, they look right, and that doesn't mean anything's overscaled here. These absolutely are not. They're proportionate to the building.
Thank you, Mr. Konstantin, Madam Chair. I have nothing further for Mr. Konstantin for affirmative testimony.
Mr. Cohen, I see your hand up, and then we'll take questions from other members of the board after David.
So, I really agree with pretty much everything you've said, Jim, but I'm just curious, do you have any information about the size of the up to 20 other signs that would be on the shopping center building facing Harrison Street? Is this, you know, is this 74-square-foot sign in line with those other signs as well?
It is, does have larger size and dimension, but the proportion of the immediate wall, and I'll basically refer to the area that you're looking at above the canopy, if we sort of frame it above the storefront there, is much larger. The sign band on the North Harrison facing long wall is, you know, does not have a lot of height to it. So, those signs actually fill more of the sign band, but the sign band is smaller. And part of that is because of the canopy and the design elements of that particular wall. So, I think this actually sits with more space around it, and those signs do, but those signs are smaller because the sign band is not as tall.
Thanks.
Other questions for Mr. Konstantin? I am not seeing any. So, oh, Mr. O'Donnell. And then, and then you, Michael.
Thank you. This isn't so much for Mr. Konstantin, it's a knowledge question. I'd like to just fill in my own knowledge for either Mr. La Place or Mr. Purcell, or Mr. Bridger would probably be best to answer it. The restriction on the number of signs in Princeton, does that also apply to signs on the door of a shop or facility?
Yes, it does.
Okay, all right, so if they were having a sign, let's say the End Cap Building, a sign above the building, then they would not necessarily have a sign on the glass of their front door as well?
That's the ordinance, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Mr. La Place?
Thank you, Chair. Mr. Konstantin, I was going to ask you about the large, the Walgreens sign over the front entrance. And I was wondering, is one of the functional reasons why it needs to be larger simply because it's set back further from North Harrison Street? It actually faces north across the field of parking. It doesn't face directly North Harrison Street. So, isn't there a functional purpose for it being a little bigger? Just would like to hear your thoughts on that.
Well, it is further from North Harrison, so it, you know, there is some visibility further down. I mean, I think the on-function, I think, just in terms of the architectural proportion on this facade, it fits.
Yeah. I completely agree with you on that, and I'm going to comment on that in a little bit. But I thought in addition to the architectural, the design reasons for it being the size that it's proposed, there seems to be a functional practicality to that size as well.
There is. I mean, you could make the argument that perhaps if you're viewing some of the other signage within the shopping center from far away, you really can't see it till you get closer, and I am sure that that does induce some drivers to drive a bit distracted because they're trying to spot out the pretty small signage at a distance.
Yeah, and I would note that the westerly elevation that directly faces North Harrison has a rather small sign, and then there's no signage on the southerly elevation, correct?
That's, that's correct.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions for Mr. Konstantin? I am not seeing any hands. It is 10:15. It'd be great to get to public comment. Is there anything we need to handle first that I'm not thinking about?
Madam Chair, can I just make a few comments about the sign variances? I really agree with the testimony, given that the, particularly the variance to allow the two signs on the northerly facade. First of all, I think there's a common sense reason for that, because pharmacy is a different message than the name of the store. They're not, it's not two Walgreens signs that they're asking for on the northerly elevation. That would be redundant. So, there's, I think there's that factor to consider. I also very much think that because of the interesting mid-20th century style that they've used, with sort of a modern twist to it, taking its cue from the original 1954 shopping center design, this kind of large signature identification sign is very much in keeping with that kind of architecture. It was always a part of the composition of a commercial storefront. So, you know, when I'm looking at it just from an aesthetic point of view, it seems to make sense to me. So, for those and other reasons, I really do think these, these variances are justified. Our sign ordinance, you know, it's interesting, as you all know, zoning is sort of a blunt instrument, and you try to, you know, regulate the best you can, but there's always instances that come up that a zoning code doesn't anticipate. I think this is a unique one. This isn't a series of smaller storefronts along a street like we see on Nassau Street or other places in town. These are setback buildings. This is a freestanding building. And I also, lastly, wanted to say that there's sort of a historic precedent where this kind of signage, you know, in, actually at the shopping center, if, you know, Princetonians will probably remember this anchor at the Princeton Shopping Center, when Bamberger's was where McCaffrey's is now. Yes, it's a larger two-story building, but look at the signage that was on this building. And there was signage on at least three sides of it, is there's the signage that you see that faced the courtyard, the interior courtyard, which was quite large, but it was one of these signature building, you know, signature logo-type signage, not unlike Walgreens. Then there was signage facing the intersection of North Harrison and Valley, and then around to what we consider the front of what's now McCaffrey's, there was a Bamberger sign as well. So, I just think that what's being proposed is very much in keeping with the style and the tradition of the shopping center. Thank you.
Thanks, Michael, and thank you for that blast from the past. That is... Yeah, it is.
Sure.
So, any, any last questions from board members before we go to public comment? Okay, I will open the meeting now to public comment. If, if you wish to speak, please virtually raise your hand by clicking on the raise hand icon at the bottom of your screen. If you missed the announcement at the beginning of the meeting, we're using at this meeting a little chime, musical interlude kind of thing at the two-and-a-half-minute mark to let speakers know that you've got 30 seconds left. And we're really doing this to try to respect everybody's time and try to make sure everyone has an opportunity to speak. So, we're going to see if that works. And, and I will ask...
Madam Chair, there are four people who have their hands raised. The first person, though, is the attorney that spoke last time, Mr. Liebman. So, are we starting with him or are we ending with him? Now we have five.
Okay, well, Will, you know what, since he raised his hand first, we can start with him, but I am going to keep it to the three-minute mark, and if he has more to say, we can, on behalf of objectors, we can circle back to him after other folks have had a chance to talk. Does that sound like a good... And Carrie, why don't you bring in, so that we don't have so much of a delay, bring in two or three folks, and then we'll just call on them in the order in which they were brought in, if you can keep track of that. Is that...
Sure.
If you call out the names, I will... I'll write them down.
First.
Okay.
Good evening, Madam Chairwoman. I have questions for the applicant's witnesses. Do you want me to start with that?
So, let me ask then Mr. Regan. So, Mr. Liebman, is, does he have an opportunity then to cross-examine each of the witnesses? Is that what we need to, to permit at some point here?
Well, if he chooses to do so, I guess we should, we should hear what he, what he'd like to, I guess, this is an opportunity for the public to ask questions also, right, Madam Chair?
Yeah.
Right, so I mean, just to be clear, I think every member of the public has a right to ask every witness questions, and then a right...
Yes, yeah, yeah, I agree with that as well, but you have a particular standing as an attorney represent, you know, hired by objectors. I mean, am I right about that, Mr. Regan, or am I off-base?
I, I mean, I think you're correct, but, but he's got the right to ask questions on behalf of the client. So, and I think we can proceed under that, and if you could, just for the record, Mr. Liebman, just identify who you're representing, again.
Sure, I represent Pam in Ives, Kent. They live on Clearview. I don't have the address in front of me at the top of my head, but they're very close to the site. And just to be clear, though, I've been labeled in objectors' council. We do not have, we're not objecting in that we don't want this approved. My clients have some concerns that they are hoping are going to be addressed, and we appreciate all the comments that the board members have given very thoughtful attention to this. But I do have some questions that I'd like to make. I'll try and be as quick as I can, because I know you all have a lot to do. And if applicant's counsel, Mr. Hoff, will direct the appropriate witnesses to answer the questions, I may go a little bit out of order because we didn't do these one-witnesses at a time. It may jump around a little bit. So, I apologize if it's a little disjointed. The first question I have is, really, maybe Mr. Hoff can answer, is will the applicant be producing a landscape plan with some additional... with some additional details for the biodetention basin that was described tonight? And for additional landscaping that will be approved? We are just a little bit uncomfortable with designating the landscaping to the borough's shade tree commission without the board having an opportunity to see a specific plan and knowing the plantings that are going to be put in and the size of them and the location. My clients would really like to see a lot more planting along the southern side of the site. So I can put that all into a group of questions to the witnesses or maybe Mr. Hoff can just jump in.
Yeah, we, we would, we're proposing that buyer retention in response to comments we got. As Mr. Cahill indicated, it is not required. We're doing it in response to board comments about the need to try and pick up additional stormwater measures. It was our expectation that should the board approve the application, that buyer retention basin would be implemented as a component of planned conformance. And that could be, it, it's of, of a nature, we believe, that could be delegated to board professionals. Mr. Dobomilsky certainly qualified in the field of landscape architecture to be able to provide the applicant with directions as to what types of plannings he would see there or want to see there. And we'll adhere to his direction in that regard, similar to the manner we did along the border between the adjoining property owners. So we didn't anticipate that would be an issue that we'd need to go back to the board. Frankly, it's not of that type of magnitude. We feel it would be properly delegated to the board professionals.
Well, the it, it's unclear to me at this point how many more trees are intended to be planted in the southern side of the site. I frankly have not been to the shopping center in about 20 years. I'm up in northern New Jersey, but when I Google Earth walked the site, it seemed like it was really, really sparse. And it's also not clear to me if there's irrigation that's going to be proposed over there to make sure that the plants are regularly watered and maintained. Is, is there irrigation on the, on the site? Can the engineer maybe answer that question over there?
Mr. Cahill, is there existing irrigation on the site?
On the, the southern property line, there is not.
All right. So is there going to be irrigation installed? Is, is that a condition that the board might consider imposing here to make sure that the landscaping thrives? Because it looks really kind of not so hot right now.
But where's no irrigation provided? I can tell you that the, to the issue of supplementation. One of the things raised in Mr. Dobomilsky's report is that there's some exist, and I think he commented on it tonight. There's some existing re, recent replanning in that area that we want to be able to take advantage of. But again, we've been candid, Mr. Alexander, as well as Mr. Cahill. Whatever Mr. Dobomilsky believes to be necessary to provide a sufficient buffer between the two properties, we're going to provide. So.
Mr. Doblinsky still on the Zoom? I don't.
He is.
I, I, can I ask you, sir, with, with respect to the plantings that you're going to recommend? If, if you could describe it a little bit more further, what you're going to require, then perhaps my clients will be more comfortable with that determination.
Yeah. So what was done more recently were evergreen trees that approximately in the eight foot range somewhere at planting time, growing into a height above 30 feet eventually. For some of them, probably just around 30 feet for others. There, there are a lot of constraints there. There's the overhead wires, as I mentioned before. There's also the existing mature landscape there that consists of some evergreen trees and deciduous trees. So the planting has to be done in a way that where the champ, the plants have a chance to thrive relative to the existing vegetation. And also the potential for, if you put something in there, it's going to get too big, the power companies will top it, you know, which is not a good thing. So basically, the, the selections will be based upon, you know, field conditions as you go along, filling in gaps in the existing. What they're proposing will remove a good portion of what was recently planted. And so it'll have to be put back. But that was what we were, that's what I would think would be reasonable. Irrigation would be problematic. It's a difficult spot to irrigate. I'm not sure. Irrigation is usually mainly put in for lawn, not for trees necessarily. And for this case, I think we'd be better served by having the plantings watered and watered until they establish and then allow them to grow from there. Would be more appropriate practice for this based upon what's going on.
All right. Well, I think so long as that requirement is included as a condition of approval or contained within the redeveloper agreement, that's fine. Mr. Darrellski, can you describe for my clients who are on the Zoom also a little bit more about the number and density of plantings that you're going to require on the southern end of the site? You know, as I look at the Google Earth images from the street, looking towards the, the old ambulance building, it's just very, very sparse. There's almost no coverage with what's existing right there. It would appear that you could put a substantial amount of planting in there.
Well, the, the ambulance building was not seen as something that would be experiencing the nuisance associated with the parking lot and the, the shopping center was more the residential area. So it's, the planting is predominantly further down along the buffer and not necessarily up by the ambulance building. The ambulance building, the shopping center were kind of more compatible uses in quasi-public commercial uses. So the planting, I'm not sure what year the Google Earth view is from. Some of them vary in when they're from. But the, if your clients are aware of some of the planting that was put in more recently, it would be that type of planting. Obviously, things change over time. So when we, when, when it gets to time of planting, we would be able to adjust field located. I think what we talked about was previously, we were able to fit in about 49 or 50 evergreen trees in that location supplement all along the whole strip. And I was suggesting that it should be at least the minimum of the same amount going back in. If, assuming they can't be preserved as they are now. And they would be placed in spots where there are no evergreen trees now that are existing. And there is space to put them in where they won't be in conflict with other landscape. You also have to make it so that vegetation is deer resistant, deer resistant to deer foraging as well, so that they, they don't just get denuded.
And I presume that you will coordinate with the applicant's landscape architect to make sure that there's a landscape plan that is prepared for the board to review before they vote on a resolution?
Well, that's for the board to decide. I wouldn't be deciding. What we did in the past is we had a number and description of what would be put there. And it was actually done as a, as the landscape was installed, the locations were chosen. It's based upon, because it's hard to do that on the plan. It's much easier to do that as you walk up and down and take a look at it and decide where the trees would go. So it was more of a list of plants and quantity. And then they were field located to get the maximum performance from the buffer.
Okay. Next question, I think perhaps Mr. Office for your traffic engineer with, with respect to protection for pedestrians along the walkway. I note the curb appears to just be a small Belgian block curb. It's not any kind of substantial barrier between vehicles and the pedestrians. Has there been any consideration to putting a barrier to protect the pedestrians? And I'm not suggesting that you put a grotesque metal highway type barrier there. But I'm thinking more of something along the lines of a timber structure to protect pedestrians from the traffic that's coming up the driveway. Has there been any consideration for that?
That may probably be a better question for Keith Cahill. He has been involved for the past year in the evolution of the design. I have not been consulted or asked to address any of that. So I don't have any history on that part of the design to answer your question.
Yeah. So in regards to that, I think the, the layout of the sidewalk in relationship to the, the travel lane is still a safe layout, very similar to sidewalks that are parallel to the drive aisles in front of the stores. So i- in that sense, I don't believe there's the need for a, a larger barrier of any sort other than the curb separating the sidewalk from the traveling.
And how tall is that curb? It looks like it's like four inches.
Six inch curb. Yep.
Six inches. Okay. All right. Well, I would, I would ask the board's professionals to, to review that and advise the board on their opinion. Let me just get through my notes. Has there been any consideration given to adjusting the timing on the traffic signal that provides access to the site? And if so, what has been recommended with that?
Not, not at this time. I think that the signal will probably be reevaluated as part of the town's road diet. We were asked to evaluate the need for turning lanes. Our recommendation is to maintain the left turn lanes with the reduction in lanes, but otherwise we've not made any formal suggestions about modification of the signal.
And how about an additional signal to control traffic coming into or out of the site? There's only the one signal, correct?
There is only one. I would say that another signal is not likely because of signal spacing requirements. If the town had asked us to evaluate that, I would say that we probably wouldn't warrant another signal, but that would have to be a full study that we have not.
Mr. Liebman, I, I want to interrupt now. I don't know how many more questions.
We have seven. We have seven individuals waiting to speak.
Yes, I, I understand that, Carrie. Thanks. Going to say, I want to make sure that we hear from as many members of the public as possible. And we've got, you know, roughly 30 minutes, less than 30 minutes left this evening. So I would ask for you to either finish up your questions in the next minute or two or go to the end of the line so that we can hear from, from members of the public. I ask that with respect.
Yeah, absolutely. And I totally get it. I just want to make clear, my client's primary request here is to maximize the plantings and screening on the south end of the property. They are very concerned about the noise that's going to come out of the site with the increased traffic. And the more planting, the happier they're going to be. And I think the happier all the residents in that part of town are going to be. And with that, my final comment is, as I emailed Mr. Regan a moment ago, there is a New Jersey administrative code section that requires pharmacies to have a sign that says pharmacy on the building. And there was no testimony about that. So I just wanted to point it out because I've run into that issue before and I thought you all ought to know it. And with that, I will, I will step back and I will raise my hand if I feel like I need to speak again. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay, I've already moved over Nunea. And the next person is Brian Walker and then Martha Devilla.
Thank you.
Guy, I guess it's me, Nuria.
Can you just raise, you swear that any testimony you, you're about to give will be the truth?
Yes, absolutely.
Name, please.
My name is Nuria Dias-Dena. I live in 22 Clearview Avenue.
Spell your last name, please, ma'am.
D as in David, I A Z dash T as in Tom, E N A. And I've been living here for more than 20 years. I go to the shopping center every day because you have to walk your dog, drink your coffee, go to aerobics or whatever you're doing or shopping. And basically, I'm very excited that it's going to get redeveloped and it's going to get more beautiful and more people be, being able to enjoy the shopping center. However, I have some of the concerns that the, the board is having, especially with the pedestrian and bike security. We have been talking a lot about the south corner. Basically, what I see, as what I understood, is that there is not enough space to have the cars, the bikes and the pedestrians, the garden, the great all in ones. So my suggestion is, has it been considered to have the south, the south part of the shopping center only pedestrian and bike path only? No, we don't need the cars there. The cars can go all around the other side. So we're going to, we're going to have a much more secure south corner. That was one of my, well, one of my suggestions. And also to secure the security of the kids going from the baseball field to readers. That's one of the analogies. So I will propose also an entrance to the parking lot and the ground entrance. So you don't even have the cars that the, the kids can get run over. So that would be another idea that I haven't seen Avalon making any proposal or having any, any of these proposals here. Then one of the things I do not understand is why we're taking into account now the pharmacy and the other shops without taking into account the whole shopping center redevelopment. Because who can we say Walgreens will do this and the other will do this without checking everything as, as, as a, as a complete shopping center redevelopment? Maybe we would like to do other things. I mean, I know the shopping center is going to be completely redeveloped. And I, and it was decided to do it as a complete shopping center. And I don't know why we're doing it piece by piece instead of the whole thing together that then is going to give us a much better idea of how it's going to be looking like. And basically, something else that today we haven't been talking about, but I still remember from the other, the previous meeting is that I think the board has to really reconsider that residential 200 units, they are not going to be energy efficient. And that's going to impact other future generation. And so basically, the the decisions that you take now is yes, of course, it's going to affect the community, the lives of the community, the new community, but also the, the, our kids and grandkids because it has really long-term consequences. So that's all I have to say. Thank you for listening to my concerns and thank you for your interesting questions about this project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I had already moved over Brian Walker. The next person is Martha Devilla and then Christine Preet.
Walker.
Walker.
Brian Walker.
See you.
I am not seeing him.
Here we are.
There we go.
And let's bring up a picture. There we go.
Good.
Use your right hand, Mr. Walker. You swear that any testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
I do.
Thank you. If you could just give us your name for the record.
Brian Walker.
Thanks, Mr. Walker. Go right ahead.
So I had a number of concerns, one of which living downstream from the shopping center has to do with stormwater management. And I appreciate Jim Purcell and, and other staff's efforts to, to add in stormwater measures with rain gardens and whatnot. But, you know, the, the whole way we're getting around the issue of far more rain gardens and whatnot is the improved impervious cover is one half of 1%. So anything more that can be, can be done towards mitigating stormwater would be great. A couple of the other big concerns I have and everybody's been touching on it is, is the whole path along the south for both cars and, and for bikes and pedestrians. And so, you know, you look at the proposed and existing plans and it's like, well, there's a road and there's a pathway. But in fact, the building is so large, it's, it's pushing both of those closer to the backyards and Clearview. And it's forcing, it's forcing that road to come right up beside that pedestrian path. And that pedestrian path will absolutely be used by bicyclists. I can't imagine a mother saying, yes, Johnny, off to school with you and, you know, make sure you stay on the road. I mean, kids that aren't comfortable, they simply will use that. And, you know, what happens when they're confronted with pedestrians? Are they going to be concerned anyway? So that existing roadway is between 26 and 27 feet wide. And it's interesting because they made a point. This is in the stormwater management report. As part of the proposed site design, the minimum allowable drive aisle sizes in accordance with local ordinances are used in lieu of larger aisles to reduce the amount of impervious surface in the post-development condition. So in other words, the issues of safety are just not that. are just not that big of a concern here because we're reducing that so that we have less impervious coverage. If, if you look at, you know, DOT recommendations, I love to see what the bicycle committee has to say. And a lot of times you'll see 12 feet wide to accommodate two-way bike traffic and/or pedestrians. And, you know, the idea that, yes, there are other places where there's a curb and a sidewalk, but those are, those are at storefronts. This is an active pathway to come and go and to connect. That's not what those other places that have curbs right beside the roadways are. So I, you know, and the one other thing I'd like to mention is at the previous meeting, we talked about shade and shadow. And there's, there's interesting devices that allow you to map out, and you can see, you know, the path that the sun travels in the summer will actually cast a shadow, not just covering the, the backyards on Clearview. It crosses the street and extends. And so the one time people would want to enjoy their backyard in the, in the peak of the summer, they will be 100% in shade and shadow. I'd recommend anybody to check out suncalc.org, and you can view for any given date, the path that the sun travels and a 60-foot tall building that close has a huge impact. So yeah, I, sorry, one final thing is, you know, it's funny in, in the world of of deliveries and everything, you know, Grubhub and you know, all these FedEx, Amazon, all these different things. So there's two parking spaces out there for, for those vehicles to make deliveries. And I can just so easily imagine somebody coming to make a delivery. Wow, the, the mail truck is there and another truck. Well, what are they going to do? They turn their emergency blinkers on, run in. And so as we narrow that pathway down, it's, it just becomes more and more of a problem. So I don't know what the answer is.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Walker. I
Thank you.
I gotta stop you there.
That's, that's fine. I would just love it if, if people would really look close at that, at that and sidewalk and realize that it's already pushed further to the south than what's existing. And thank you for your time.
Yeah, thank you. Our little chime, our, our little chime system is not working. Um, I, I don't know why that is, but maybe at the three-minute mark, Carrie, you can raise your yellow hand on your screen or something like that, and I can.
Yes.
Sorry, Ms. Devilla, I did not mean to eat into your time. Have your full three minutes.
Can you just raise your right hand? Do you swear that any testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Yes. So I, I'd like to echo some of the comments from earlier participants. The first one, and I don't know if this is a question for Jim or for Mr. Cahill regarding the slope against the property lines. And if we are confident that that slope is not going to be prone to erosion, considering that we're going 3 to 1. I, I don't know if that, if Jim feels confident that he's still on the call here.
I am still here. Yeah, a 3 to 1 slope, Martha, is not, is not steep. It's not going to be subject to erosion. It's, it's going to be landscaped, and it will be perfectly fine from an erosion standpoint.
Can plantings be, can there be plantings in that slope?
Yes, yes. And, and I think that you heard Dan Dobremilski actually testify to that and their landscape effect as well.
So I, so I think that one thing that we might want to consider is when the time comes for these plantings, the new plantings to happen, maybe that could be some work with the homeowners that maybe we can eliminate some of the deciduous trees that are not in such good shape and make some room for these evergreens to be planted there. That might, that might be helpful. And I'm also wondering if the 10-foot that we're left with, that is not a sloped portion of the site, that if that's going to be enough for the trees to be planted, considering that we have the wires overhead. I don't know if Brian can speak to that.
Well, Mr. Dobremilski spoke to understanding what those constraints are and his judgment about, you know, based on the field conditions about the, the optimal location for, you know, specific plantings.
Yes. Okay, so I just hope that you work with the homeowners because we're really losing a lot of greenery that has thrived recently, the last five years, whatever Eden's put there has really helped us with creating a buffer. So I hope that we get some replacement. Another comment that I have has to do also with that sidewalk and how narrow it is. Perhaps if the building was three feet shorter, we could, you know, get some benefit. And really, the building is too large for the site. The other concern I have is the delivery trucks coming on to the site and then having to go against the traffic to get to that entrance, because that's probably what's going to happen. They're going to come on Harrison, they're going to turn right, they're going to go up to the building, and then they're going to have to go against the traffic to get into the two parking spaces that are there. And I'm concerned that that's going to create some traffic issues and some problems. So perhaps that could be some study of locating that mailroom somewhere else in the building, perhaps towards the front of the building, also centralized close to where the office for the rentals is. It might be an appropriate location. So just if that could be considered, I would very much appreciate that. The last item that I have a lot of concerns with, and I expressed that the last time, and Brian has just mentioned, is the fact that our backyards would likely be shaded in the summer from this development. And I'm pretty sure the park is going to be affected as well, but we haven't seen any, anything coming from the developers showing what is happening. I don't know that they are obliged to, to do that because they're following the ordinance, but perhaps that could be a a request from the board. And is the board is the board intending to vote on this tonight?
Well, we need to hear from all members of the public who wish to speak. It was certainly my hope to be able to vote tonight, but I don't know whether that is going to be possible. I would say that with regard to the height of the building and the setback, that, you know, is, is baked. It is, it is set forth clearly in the in agreement that's already exists between the developer and the town, and it just isn't going to change. So.
Yeah, I, I would just briefly say that the, that the new development should really try to relate to its adjacent neighborhoods. And what this one is doing is taking away our privacy, taking away our solar access, and taking away the character of our neighborhood. So with that, I end my comments.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Okay, I have already moved over Christine Preet. And the next individual is Lisa Seriosol.
Welcome, Ms. Preet. Mr. Regan will swear you in.
If you could just raise your right hand, you swear any testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
I do.
And if, just for the record, if you can give us your name.
Sure, Christine Pready.
Sorry to mispronounce it.
That's okay. It happens often.
I'm sure it does. Go right ahead.
So my address is to, I don't know if I'm supposed to give that, but my driveway. Okay, if you're familiar with the shopping center, the one-way exit out by the Verizon store, our home is directly across from that. So when you cross over Harrison Street, if you were to continue straight, you'd go right into our driveway. And we've been dealing with the traffic ever since we moved here. It's actually a family home that was built in the 1950s. So we're always familiar with the traffic that goes in and out of the shopping center. And the only thing I want to speak to is the safety of everybody, the pedestrians, the bikers, you know, our kids play baseball, the shopping center as well. And it just seems like it's going to get way too congested for all the, you know, pedestrian activity that goes on within the shopping center. And hearing about the traffic study with the moderate increase of traffic, it just doesn't seem substantial enough for the increase of traffic that we see varies on a day-to-day basis. And even just going through the shopping center, they're definitely nowhere near 90% capacity with all the empty stores that are there. I just had a quick question about the road diet, with the road diet that they're thinking about. Is that going to be on both sides of Harrison? It is. Okay. So that's, you know, a little concerning because, you know, condensing those two lanes of traffic into one. Again, you know, I, I don't know what our voice has within to say, but I do want a voice of concerns for the pedestrians because the shopping center is heavily populated all throughout the day at different times of day. And, you know, the traffic study looks like it was conducted on two days. I wish there could have been more studies done on that as well. And I guess I won't be able to see the beautiful sunrises as well from our house anymore if hearing the different comments in regards to the structure blocking the sun and so forth. So that's all I have to say. Thank you for your time, though.
Thank you, Ms. Pready. I know that the board and the council share your concerns about pet and bike safety, as do other residents. So I, I feel like that's pretty confident it's going to get the attention it deserves. But thank you. Up again.
I'm sorry, can I just ask one quick question, given where the location of our driveway is with the shopping center and especially with the traffic increase? I mean, do we have legitimate concerns? Do we have any rights? It's just that our driveway is in a poor location?
I am, I, I'm not the person to address that.
I understand.
I, I think the road diet specifically meant to slow traffic down and increase safety for pedestrians and bikes. That's the, the whole point is to make a more multimodal kind of street. And the more lanes there are, the faster people go. I can't speak to your rights because I'm not an attorney.
Okay, so Lisa Seriosol is the next individual to speak. And then Tineke, she spoke last time.
Ms. Seriosol, can you just raise your right hand? You swear any testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Good evening, Board and members of the applicant's team, I guess I would call them. I appreciate all of the references that have been made to pedestrian and bike safety. I can tell you that I am speaking tonight as an individual, though I do have a lot of experience in looking at pedestrian and bike safety issues, both in Princeton and professionally, where I work on Safe Roots to School, as well as Street Smart campaigns for towns in both Mercer and Ocean Counties. I had expressed some concerns in the previous meeting about the circulation of bikes and pedestrians. And I'm glad to see that there has been some advancement on that consideration. However, I would like to bring your attention to a few aspects that still need to be addressed. First of all, the road width that you referred to of 24 feet, which would be travel lanes of 12 feet on either side, would be easily handle a speed of up to 45 miles per hour. I don't think that's what you're trying to achieve here. The Federal Highway Administration for Urban Roadways in local areas, residential areas, has a chart that the roadway width can even go down to nine feet. So nine and 10 feet width is perfectly acceptable. And I can just quote briefly, I did not have time to prepare any statement for this, but I can just read from one of the books I have here that references the Institute of Transportation Engineers Traffic Engineering Handbook, 7th Edition. 10 feet should be the default width for general-purpose lanes at speeds of 45 miles per hour or less. And I would hope that we're not talking about 45 miles per hour in the shopping center. I would also say that a multi-use path that's been referred to several times should be something of the order of eight, minimum eight feet in width and up to as much as 10 feet. There is even a consideration that I would like to put on the table for the the roadway, I'm sorry, the, the multi-use path is going to feed not only the residents of the new 200 units that are going to be built at the shopping center, but also anyone that's living in the new developments on Fanit, as well as the Little Brook neighborhoods. And connectivity is very important for an efficient bike and pedestrian network. So you've got bike boulevards on Grover Lane, on Franklin, and on Tarhune. And all of those could easily feed off of what you're proposing to build here. So I would strongly urge you to consider an 8 to 10-foot wide multi-use path. I think I've probably run out of time.
Yes, you have. Thank you. Thank you very much. That's, that's helpful information.
Okay, we have Tineke, Theo, and John Heilner.
Can we just raise your right hand? You swear that any testimony you will provide will be the truth?
I do. I'll try to be brief. I am very happy to hear that you are going to, that the developers are going to install more external bicycle parking next to the building. And I would like to entreat you to have more bicycle parking than just for, than just for upside-down use because they will be very popular, you know, if you install four upside-down use. And there's one person in the building celebrating their birthday, those use will be full. So, so please make it so that there's actually enough bicycle parking spaces for visitors. I would like to also talk about the exit of the parking garage. It, I think it is dangerous to have a sidewalk right across the way from that. And I am with Mr. Dopremilski when he said that the trees should be between the sidewalk and the exit of the parking garage. I mean, let us have the trees protect the children getting their ice cream from the fields. And let us not have the children protect the trees. I would also love to see the the road south of the developments be safe. I hope you can put in traffic calming measures. For instance, trees as large as will fit in that space are traffic calming. Raised crosswalks, as was mentioned by the chairwoman, are excellent traffic calming, as well as providing better safety for pedestrians. And finally, you know, the entrance for the drive-through at the Walgreens, you have it come in in that, in the parking space close to the building. And I'm wondering if there's a way, I'm probably going to be slapped down for this because this means more signs. I'm wondering if there's a way to. I'm wondering if there's a way to ask drivers to come in to the northernmost entrance so that they don't cross as many pedestrians that will make their way from that parking lot to the entrance of the Walgreens. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, John Heilner has already moved over, and then we have Tom, and then that's it.
Okay.
Mr. Heilner, if you could just raise your right hand? You swear any testimony that you are about to give will be the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
So I have a question and then just a couple of comments. My question is, in this week's Excellent Town Topics letter to the editor regarding the project, the writer states that in the agreement with Avalon Bay, after thirty years, the affordable housing requirement disappears. Is this true? And if it is, what will we be, what can we do to prevent this? Should I go on with the comments or? Does somebody want to answer the question?
I, I can answer the question.
Great.
Uh, go, yeah, go right ahead.
Sure. The, the affordable housing restrictions are governed by UHAC provisions. So the UHAC provisions provided the conclusion of thirty years, the, the controls do not automatically expire.
What does UHAC stand for, for those of us who?
I apologize, Madam Chair. It's the Uniform Housing and Affordabilities Control Act. And it governs all new deed restrictions post two thousand and four. So the deeds provide that upon the conclusion of the period of affordability controls, there's a period by which those controls can phase out, provided that the person living in there no longer remains income qualified. So there's not a situation at the conclusion of the thirty years where someone has their rent jacked up, you know, twenty, thirty, forty percent. There are rules in place in UHAC to prevent that type of practice. And there are also opportunities for the municipality to negotiate for the extension of those controls should they choose to do that. But even if they did not do that, there are protections for existing residents and units that remain income qualified at the conclusion of the thirty years.
Okay, thank you. Comments? Again, according to the article in the, in the Town Topics today, apparently a pilot has been negotiated in lieu of normal property taxes. And of course, a pilot pays nothing toward our schools. And the two hundred units will certainly generate students, which is a good thing. So the last fifteen years at least, at least.
John, John, I, I, I just have to interrupt you. It wasn't an article in the Town Topics. It was a letter to the editor and much of it was inaccurate. So I don't, you know, I, I'm happy to talk with you at, at another point, but, 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 but it, more than half of it was not factual. A pilot hasn't been negotiated. There is a pilot that is in the process of being, well, there's a redevelopers agreement which will include a pilot. And one focus of that is the, our schools and, and, and projects and things that can help, can help our schools. But that's not really an appropriate subject for a hearing where we're supposed to be focusing on the, on the site plan.
So this is something that will be discussed by council when they approve or don't approve?
Yes, yes, it will come to council.
Yeah, okay. And then in terms of the other comments, and again, I, I guess this is more a thing for the council and we can talk about it there. I think as a town, we, we got ourselves in a position where we had to scramble in a very compressed time period to find willing developers to negotiate things like this with them. And, uh, you know, we knew for a long time we were going to have an increased co-agreement or requirement. And we just didn't know exactly how large. And given the open limited space in Princeton, it would seem like the shopping center was always going to be a prime candidate, just an observation. So I'll leave it at that and I'll come back when we have a council meeting on this. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Heilner.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so the last individual I moved over is Tom.
Okay.
You see you, Tom, or no?
Not seeing him quite yet.
Can you hear me?
We can. Tom, can you turn on your camera? And then Mr. Regan will swear you in.
Hey, okay.
There you go.
Thank you.
If you could just raise your right hand, do you swear that any testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
Yes, I do.
I'm going to put the record if you can give us your full name.
Tom Letterer, L-E-D-E-R-E-R. I'll be, I'll hope to make that three-minute barrier. I'm, my comments are addressing the, the buffer zone on the south side of the project. I appreciate the effort to try to modify that planting area. And I'd just like to point out that based on the information that I saw on the record that in the demolition plan, that's C two oh one, there were forty-nine trees designated for removal under this, under the polar plan. And included there were three very large sycamore trees. They're about sixteen or seventeen inches in diameter. And in the landscape plan, there were twenty-one trees in that area designated for planting, including three replacement sycamores. So it appears to be like a twenty-eight tree deficit, at least at the present time, according to the, it, the, you know, the record that's available. So I would hope that the future work on this would improve that ratio and bring, bring it up to a real enhancement. And the other concern I have are trees, the mature trees that are growing on the and on the Clearview Avenue properties. These are, you know, easily visible when you exit the Walgreens store. They're very large trees. I'm concerned about the damage that may occur to them by the excavation of the slope. It would appear that that excavation would start roughly eight feet, eight or nine feet from the property line. And it's, you can observe surface roots extending from these very large trees beyond that point. So I'm concerned that these roots will be severed. And I would like to request that this tree protection zones that are proposed for the inner courtyard also be extended to these trees where necessary. The arborist could then designate those areas as well for tree protection zones. Thanks, that's it.
Thank you very much, Mr. Letterer. Mr. Dopramski, can you speak to the first, first question about tree replacement? And the number, numbers being removed and the numbers being planted?
Yes, so what Mr. Letterer indicated was, is, is in my report, which is that the, the forty-nine trees that are being removed along that buffer, mostly the ones that were recently planted, and that they are proposing a much lesser number. I had down, I think there were eighteen evergreen trees, I think is what we're being put back. And that's where the, basically what I was indicating that we need to put back, we need to plant more like fifty trees and not eighteen trees. So we do need additional trees in that area or, or landscape equivalent to trees based upon what can be done in the space that's provided. I will say that this large sycamore, you, it was quoted as caliper size. However, some of those trees have been topped due to the power lines. So, um, they're not growing the full height that you would typically expect for that type of tree. And that's part of the problem with that whole, or the challenge in that whole area is you have the power lines, the narrow width and all that. So I, but I think it really, that goes back to what I said, you really need to look at it in the field and make a decision in the field, what makes sense in order to get an adequate buffer in that area.
And about the tree protection zone for the roots of the trees that are growing in the Clearview Backyards?
Yep, same thing. That's very important. That typically township would require tree protection along edges of disturbance for all areas and that we include this, and it's critical that we maintain them. That if the construction strays beyond those limits, it could become a problem where you're going to start losing some of the trees along the edge of the property that are shown to be safe. So that's critically important as well.
And that is, you're, you're, you're taking the lead on making sure that that happens? Or is that, am I wrong about that? I'm not?
That usually occurs with the, the township engineer inspection crews. They would do that and I would only be brought in, either me or the town arborist would be brought in if there were particular, particular problems.
Okay. Okay, so, um, good. Uh, thank, thanks again, Mr. Letterer.
Thank you.
Okay, so I automatically, I automatically moved over Mark Liebner, Liebman, I'm sorry. Just out of courtesy, I don't know if you want to continue. That's up to you, Madam Chair.
Do you have any other questions, Mr. Liebman?
I have two questions.
Quickly, please.
Sure. Uh, the hours of operation for the Walgreens, I don't think we heard from anybody at operations there yet. Is that going to be a twenty-four hour Walgreens?
Now that you answered that, I'll try and get it. Why don't you go to your second question and probably get it?
Okay, the second question is going to be very quick. I just want to confirm there's no exterior wall-mounted lighting on the Walgreens building? It did not look like there was, but I just wanted to confirm that. With the architect, I think.
Yeah, let's see. The lighting or that on the building?
Sorry, can you repeat the question, please?
I just want to confirm there's no wall-mounted lighting on the Walgreens building?
Confirming on the plans. There is wall-mounted lighting on the rear of the building currently. It's shown above the service door and at the service area. Above the, for the trash.
Okay, all right, and?
Hours, eight AM to ten PM.
Eight to ten, okay. All right, and then the last thing I have, Madam Chairman, is really just a comment that the, the redevelopment process does not invite public participation as efficiently as a hearing like this. And I would just suggest on behalf of my clients that if this site becomes the subject of further redevelopment efforts, I would ask that considerable effort be made to publicize it amongst the community so that when the planning board has its meetings, to consider that, that there is more public participation in that process than ordinarily exists under the land use law. I think it's a real shortcoming in the MLEL that there's no public notice to residents within two hundred feet of a site that's being considered for redevelopment. It really happens at the planning board with a publication in the newspaper perhaps, but nobody really reads those. But I would just ask that it be disseminated far and wide so that the neighbors who live nearby can participate more actively in that process. I think it will lead to a better redevelopment plan. Finally, I would just ask if my client Pam Ives, who is on the call, could be promoted to the screen so that I can just ask her a few questions as a witness and so you can see who she is.
Okay, will you promise me that you will make this quick?
Yes, I will.
I'm sorry, I really not, don't want to be rude, but we're already well past when we really try to close things up and.
I understand, and I'm speaking softly so I don't wake everybody up in my house.
And, and Mr. Liebman, just so you're aware, property owners list went out to everybody within two hundred feet of the entire parcel. And we did notification in the newspaper. So that was for the redevelopment discussion. And for this, the property, the owners reached out to the property owners within two hundred feet. There was adequate notice.
And also, just so you know, Mr. Liebman, we have had extensive meetings with the neighbors over Zoom and in person. And the applicant has met in, with one of the neighbors in her backyard. There, there have been meetings with the neighbors going back more than a year.
My clients are relatively new neighbors to the.
But that's not, you can't really, it's not really fair to put the blame on the municipality.
I'm not blaming anybody.
Yes, I mean, this has been a pretty extensive outreach process.
Please, uh, please don't misunderstand. I don't mean to blame anybody.
Okay, so let's bring Ms. Ives over. Did she raise her hand? And now Pamela Kent has raised her hand as well.
Yeah, it's Pam Kent, Ives Kent is her husband.
Oh, excuse me. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Yep, you did say that before. Sorry about that.
There, I'm sorry, I can't see.
Uh, I can't, I can't see her yet either, Frank. Looks like she's still in the attendees.
Oh, there we are. You can turn on your camera and unmute. Ms. Kent, can you just raise your right hand? You swear that any testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'll, I'll be as fast as I can, Madam Chairman. Ms. Kent, when did you move into the neighborhood?
Last August, a year ago.
Okay, and can you just give us your street address for the record, please?
Seventy-two Tiere, T R.
And is it fair to say that what I asked on your behalf is accurate? That your primary concern is the maximum screening and planting in the southern part of the city?
We had some concerns with what they were presenting for landscaping, considering the kind of development Avalon is and the, you know, their abilities to.
Okay, is there anything else that you wanted to add, Ms. Kent?
You know, I just think that Princeton Shopping Center, we moved here because it is such an asset. It's a prime real estate location. And I understand the situation the town is in. I understand all party sides. I understand even side, I understand all the sides of it, but the best development will be if they bring the best that they can. And we're, we're kind of begging that they do the right thing here. You know, everything's been set in stone. I know Ms. Sacks said that community development had, you know, that there'd been an outreach. You know, from what I understand, the former mayor spoke to two or three people. It was during the pandemic. There wasn't quite the outreach that, um, at least in discussions with the neighbors as we're trying to get up to speed on, on this process. Doesn't seem to be that there was quite as much outreach as it has, is being, you know, claimed. And I think that, you know, people feel it's somewhat overbuilt. The town had to do something. They were under the gun. They had a, a place to do it. It's done. You know, we all have to accept that, but, um, you know, it's, it's sad. And the shopping center is a gem and it could continue to be a gem. And we're not against, we're not against it. We just want it to be the best that it can be now that it's been set in stone. That's all.
Thank you. I don't have any further questions, Madam Chair.
Thank you both. I really appreciate that.
There are no other hands raised at this time.
Okay, so with that, I will close the public portion of the meeting. Consider the gavel pounded. Okay, so fellow board members, I, I have a list of things that I think sort of rose to the top in terms of priorities that, as was said earlier, we might make sure.
as was said earlier, we might make sure the council is aware of. I'm sure other folks have got their shortlists too. It's 11:23. I don't know how long it's going to take us to button this down tonight. And so I would like to know, you know, what's your pleasure?
Madam Chair, thank you, Madam Chair. I the issue of the traffic study, I think, is a huge one for me. We heard from our professionals that they were given a 96-page report that they expressed concerns about whether it was complete. I don't think that hearing from, hearing the concerns of our professionals about the timing of this, of the submission of this report, that I'm comfortable voting on this. Circulation is a delicate issue both for this application and for this growth node, this second downtown that is, that's being built. So I know that we, we really wanted to sort of push at least one thing over the, over the finish line. But and, and you know, I mean, if you want to go on, I, I'm just not comfortable voting for that reason alone.
Madam Chair, can I just respond to that, just for the sake of the record, to Mr. Quinn's point? I, it, it should be noted that we did provide an initial traffic assessment and the response to that was the request for additional information, additional counts. So it, it's not as if we just ignored traffic until three days ago. It, it was requested that we provide additional information. We did that. And the additional information being requested by the traffic consultants with respect to counts, or I don't even think it was counts, it was just the ability to digest the information. I, I don't know from a traffic perspective what that would change. It, it is a permitted use. We did analyze the levels of service at the relevant intersection. So I know that there was a lot of comments offered by Mr. Cohen regarding additional improvements that are contemplated in the area. That would certainly not necessarily impact us. It would certainly benefit the center. But it wouldn't be something that we would be responsible for anyway. So while I appreciate the professionals wanting to take a deeper look at it, in the end, I don't know what, what would change in terms of the layout of this site, given that it's.
Mr. Hoff, if I may?
Sure.
What could change is whether or not the additional impacts of rerouting truck traffic was taken into consideration in their analysis. We don't know that because we haven't gotten all of the data. I, I don't know, Heather, did you notice whether or not that truck rerouting was considered at that traffic signal, for example? That's a, that's a big impact if we're sending truck traffic through that intersection that did not have truck traffic before, or that amount of truck traffic. I don't know what the existing and the proposed are.
Yeah, there, there is no discussion in the traffic report regarding truck traffic, loading. They did, obviously, they counted heavy vehicles. I don't know to what extent they were classified because the appendices do not include the appropriate traffic count sheets. So again, like that, that's something that we definitely still need to look further into.
Okay, points, points very well taken. What kind of timeframe do you think is reasonable for getting the answers that we need in order to make an informed decision?
What information?
I'm trying to, I'm trying to scope the path forward. I don't know who, who I'm addressing that question to, I guess, except for Jim, Jim and Heather.
I mean, I'm, I'll need, I mean, until early next week, you know, to get my review letter together, you know, I still have questions and comments and then obviously, you know, they're going to need time to respond back to them. So I mean, I'm, I'll, on my end, I'll need, you know, I'll do it as fast as I can. I'll, I'll work on the weekend, but I'll probably, you know, Monday or Tuesday, I can get something to Jim.
Madam Chair, and I hate to do this, you know, I like to see these, these get done as quickly as possible. But we've heard testimony tonight that they're adding bike racks. I haven't seen an analysis based on zoning as to whether or not they're meeting the ordinance. In our, in our review letter, we said there were 110 bicycle storage spaces that they were short just in the residential building alone. There's a, there are requirements for short-term and long-term bicycle storage. There were no bicycle storage racks at, at Walgreens. Do they have the proper number? Are they in the right location? I noticed tonight in, in testimony that they're showing a bike rack at the southwest corner of the new residential building, but there's no entrance to the building at that location, as far as I can tell from the architectural drawings. We also had heard testimony tonight that, or at least we heard from the planning board tonight, that they would like them to reconsider the width of the drive aisle and increasing the size of the pedestrian path to be up to 10 feet wide. That's a, that's a site plan issue that needs to be reviewed. I need to look at whether or not that's, if they, if they do recommend that, whether or not it's possible for emergency vehicles to access the building. There are a lot of things that were testified to tonight that, in my opinion, require an amended site plan submission, but I will do my best if this board says that they want to move forward and we'll do our best to do this through a conditional review of compliance. It's just a lot to digest for us professionals based on testimony and plans and reports that we haven't seen completed yet. And I apologize for that, but.
No, 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 no reason to apologize. And maybe it's too, too soon to know whether whether an entire amended site plan would be needed based on the information that you get. You know, I, I don't know the answer to that. I'm trying to, to scope out the path forward and the timeframe for it. And I understand that we, you know, have an obligation to have a certain number of meetings a month, including calling special meetings. Counting next week, Mr. Hoff, this board will have met five weeks in a row. People have heard me say that before and I don't want to beat it to death, but we are doing absolutely everything we can to deal with what's in front of us. But these questions that have been raised really are fundamental ones and I'm hearing that you know, folks are not ready to to settle on conditions and vote tonight.
I mean, obviously, I, I can't make you vote. If I could, I'd be a lot better at my job. But I will say, and I'm not going to argue, Mr. Pessell, but I thought we had provided the testimony relative to bikes. And with respect to, in fact, I thought we agreed that we were complying with that, but it's neither here nor there. With respect to the thing that gives me pause is, I, I don't believe it by any sense. Do we have an amended site plan situation here? If, if the board wants.
I wasn't, I, I, Mr. Hoff, I wasn't saying that, I was saying that if, if all of the things testified tonight and requested were completely put together, it would amount to an amended site plan, in my opinion. But that's, it's just, it's just that we get, and I, sorry, it's getting late and I, and I'm getting a little frustrated because I, I have it falls on our shoulders to spend an awful lot of time while additional design is being done. That should be done before this board approves something. And as an example, I'm still working on this applicant's compliance review on their last application. And it's been six months because we're still going back and forth on design. So I, I'd be much more comfortable if we had a set of documents to review instead of testimony and, and several exhibits that I don't, I, I, I'm just, I'm sorry. I, I, it's up to you as the planning board to make this decision and we will do, as staff and professionals, we will do what we need to do to get this through. If you vote to approve it tonight with all those conditions, we will wait for a set of compliant documents. Thank you.
Mr. Ockman has.
Can I just, I, I just want to add something in really quick. The initial letter, and it was a letter, there was no analysis that for the traffic submission in July. They projected that with the development of the 200-unit apartment complex and, you know, the, the drive-through Walgreens, that in the end, the, the new shopping center would actually be generating less trips than it does today. That's all I had received. So until three days ago, I had nothing, no analysis, nothing besides this unrealistic, you know, calculation that, you know, when you, you develop a 200-unit apartment building, it's going to generate less trips than it does today. So that's what I had going since July. And then since then, I really had nothing to review.
And Heather, just for the, for the record, I'd like to put on the record that you and I communicated on July 20th, and that was when you requested the additional information. But we also understand that they would have had to wait till school was in session to do proper counts. So hence the reason that we're in the position today. It wasn't that we didn't ask for the information earlier. It's the information couldn't be gathered until after school was in session. So and then, of course, the analysis has to be done. We're not, we're not, we're not trying to blame anybody for having the report in our hands in, in the short period of time before the meeting. We're just saying that's the way it worked.
Right.
And, and now we need time to review it.
Yep, understood. Mr. Ockman?
Oh, thanks. I'll, I'll just be quick. I, I had a comment and a question. I guess first the comment, which is if, if we're, I, I thought it was an important point that was made earlier in the meeting that the shopping center needs to be evaluated at a reasonably full occupancy. You know, I would, presumably, that's, that's like, you know, 94, 95%, and I don't know what it is now. I don't think it's 91%, you know, having been there recently, but whatever it is, I think that, that, that if we're doing additional traffic analysis, like that, that needs to be factored in because I think, you know, part of the, part of the reason for, or part, part of the benefit of, of all these new housing units is that, is that we, we may actually be able to fill the shopping center up with, with, you know, with, with retail. So that was my comment. Question is, just in terms of your efforts to kind of think about a path forward from here, can, can we clarify, like, I know there were some deadlines around this that we needed to hit, like, what is our, wha, wha, what is our sort of statutory or your, or what, what are our obligations to get this done by a certain point so that we can back it out from there? Because I think that's, that's got to drive some of these decisions. Maybe that's the question that requires, Mr. Regan.
Can I just be more specific? I think we have an open meeting on the 28th, so maybe we could. Frank, are you shaking your head? Are you not available on the train?
I have two other meetings that night.
Okay.
And, and Mr. Ockman too, and, and then you next, Mr. Cohen. I got a call this afternoon that was explaining an attorney on behalf of the municipality was explaining agreements that were in place that were not with this applicant, but maybe with Edens, but I, I'm sorry that I, that I can't remember real coherently all the details of his argument, but, but there are agreements and understandings in place that left the expectation that we would finish, you know, very quickly tonight or in the next few days. And that, it, it seems to me is not going to happen. And so I think it's, it's going to be important and I'll reach back out to this individual tomorrow to understand the situation better and, and maybe have Michael LePlace and Mr. Regan on the line as well, or just get Frank. You can reach directly out to Kevin Van Heist, but so we need to understand that timing question. It would be really helpful if, I think, if the professionals and our professionals and consultants would, would put into bullet points exactly what we still need in the way of traffic and circulation information. I completely agree with the full occupancy traffic analysis point and all the other points that were made and and then we can figure out when is the soonest next special meeting or or soonest time that we can call a special meeting or have time on an agenda to address. Sorry, my voice is suddenly giving out to address the rest of these questions.
Madam Chair, can I, to, to the point, there is an existing MOU that requires that the board consider two meetings a month on this application as well as timing for just ultimate action. I've done, you know, the math on that. I believe the deadline to be November 2nd for final action on this application. But regardless of that, I, I'm curious, what, what's the board's current schedule? Because a lot of the things that are being requested of us are things, you know, it's review time, it's provide answers, but in terms of actual time before this board, I, I don't envision much more. So if you carved out some time on the next available meeting, it's not as if we'd be taking up anywhere near the meeting. Public participation is closed. There's no further, you know, affirmative testimony to be provided. So I, I can envision a situation where we're taking up a big part of a meeting. But I mean, so I, I, again, I don't know what the board's current schedule is, but I do, I do believe there is another meeting scheduled in October, no?
There is, and we are hearing Princeton University's application for 91 prospect and the ES and Environmental Studies and School of Engineering and Environmental Science and or, I'm sorry, School of Engineering and Applied Science, and I can guarantee you that will take every moment that we give it next week, the 28th is the following Thursday. Mr. Regan is not available. We have a, a full agenda, as I understand it, on the 4th of November, and we do not currently have a meeting scheduled for the 11th of November, I believe. Is that correct?
That's correct. It's a holiday. We are closed on the 11th. It's Veterans Day.
What about the Wednesday? What about Wednesday, the 27th?
I was going to say the same thing. I.
The 27th is a zoning board hearing. So is that a problem?
Both Derek and I have to attend that.
I also, I, I just have to say, I think from what I heard Jim say, the applicant is going to need some time to, to prepare. I, I think that it's overly optimistic to say, let's take the next available slot and think that all of this information that Jim and Heather are looking for is going to be ready with enough lead time that they'll have a chance to review it before that meeting.
Can, can, can Mr., I'm sorry to interrupt, like, can Mr. Hoff explain, like, how, how is the November 2nd date calculated? Like, what, is that based off of something in the MOU?
Yeah, it's, it was. Yeah, it's, it's, well, it's based on the MLUL. It's uh submission date uh plus uh, I have it. It's either nine.
I, I took a look at it, Rick. It's, is it 95 days from when the application was deemed complete?
Which would. 95 days from submission of the application. Is what it says.
Well, I think what Louise was referring to, and I don't really want to get into it in this context, and I wish there was some. Ability to have a sidebar in planning forward hearing, but um, there are agreements. That have, that have uh deadlines between the applicant and Walgreens that involved. Completion of certain um. Um. Certain steps. Um, and, and I think we want to, so the, I, I, I think that's what you need to discuss with your. Client, Mr. Hoff, is. Whether is the timing of what was expected between your, your client and Walgreens and Edens because there's. A, a web of agreements there which are all contingent upon one another and have tight timeframes. I know we've been working under those tight timeframes for many months.
Yes, a web of aggr- agreements is a good way to put it. That is what I walked away from that bizarre phone message with.
Hangled web.
We have to, we have to carry this application to a date certain.
Are people available on Wednesday?
The applicant has to renotice.
And, and I just, to, I had actually two, I had a comment and a question. Um. I, I would just like to hear on the record how it is um. From our staff and our consultant that we ended up in a hearing tonight with. Our attorneys and everyone who's been involved with the expectation that we would be able to bring it to a close. And now we hear that there is um. Testimony outstanding. There seems to be a tremendous amount of work and I'm just wondering um. Why, why that is? And is that, is it something that we didn't get from the applicant? Is it because, is it something we didn't?
Are you, are you asking, are you asking me, Ms. Hacks? Because, because, because it, it, most of what we've heard tonight has to do with site plan review. Site plan and traffic review. And, and it's. Uh, we, we literally saw presentation tonight. Exhibits. Answering some of the questions that we had in our review memo. For the first time tonight. They've never, they haven't provided us with revised site plans, for example, showing bicycle rack locations, and I have questions about. What those, how those locations were determined and, and what they're there for and. I don't, and I heard testimony that. They're providing the, the number that are required, but based on our ordinances, but I haven't seen an analysis. I've seen circles on a, on an exhibit. I, I. Uh, and, and that's, that's just one little item.
Cut you off, Jim, but I don't think it, it's productive at this point and at this hour to try to. Parse uh. You know, all the various ways to answer that question. Um. To be fair, I, I think we just need to schedule a date certain. Uh, figure out what the key questions are. Uh, exactly what we need to cover, what we need to know before that meeting and what we need to cover. Um. In order to finish. And I, I don't know whether. November 10th works for folks.
November 10th is the night of the site plan review board, but I was thinking. How was the prior Wednesday? The 3rd.
So we would have planning board meetings two nights in a row?
Oh, my gosh. No, yes, that's, I was suggesting.
Yeah, I, I just don't, I think that's um, I don't think that's reasonable.
Can I? And can Sprab, can Sprab reschedule? There, I, I, again, not knowing what's on their agenda.
Uh, we are looking at um Princeton International Properties on North Tulane. And they don't have to notice for Sprab, so yes, we can move them. To another date.
I'm.
Would you agree to that, Mr. Hoff?
What, I'm sorry, what, what's the date that you just suggested? I missed it.
Uh, November 10th.
I, I have a, let me ask you, I, why is it that? I know that Princeton's on, but why, why do they have priority over a court?
They asked the same thing about you, Mr.
They have a court order?
I, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, who, why does I, who have priority?
Why does it have priority? I, I know they're Princeton and they're very important, but do they have a court order that says they go first?
No, I said that they can be postponed.
No, Carrie, I, he's asking about the university. I think we're.
I, I, Mr. Hoff, I, I just, I think you've been in a news blackout. But um suffice to say that if you just do a little bit of reading of what's been going on between the town and the university and what's on next week, I think it would help you to understand why it's really, really important and, and um. With that, but I mean, I would have no objection. I agree that I, I don't think it would take that much time. I would. I think it wouldn't be a problem to put you on at the beginning, but I, it doesn't sound like um. I mean, what it, what I'm hearing from our staff is that they're overloaded and um. And I'm not sure that we would be in, in, in any better shape next week at this time.
Well, no, next week is too soon.
Yeah, how about the 10th?
Yeah, how about November, how about November 10th?
I, I'm, I, I can't agree. I mean, I, I was under the impression that the, the board would be honoring the, the two meetings a month. So is there another date in October that we could do it?
Well, they have had two meetings in a month. I mean, it may not have been October. I mean.
Yeah, I guess the la- last meeting was September 30th, right? Almost.
Twenty nights, so two weeks ago. And we're, I think we're doing our best to try to accommodate. We understand the timeframe. I, I, we're all aware, well aware of it and want to accommodate. I just don't know if it's possible to do it any sooner.
Um, did, did somebody throw out the idea of, of Wednesday, the 27th, and that didn't work because of, oh, zoning board, right?
Zoning, GBA.
Yeah, sorry about that.
And.
What about Tuesday?
The 26th?
Yeah.
Uh, I could do that. Does that give the applicant enough time? Does that give everybody enough time to gather and process the information we still need?
Frank, are you available on that day?
Trying to find out. I think I am. That's October 26th.
Yes.
Yeah, I believe I am. I've got it. Check my schedule.
Are you doing that right now, Frank, or?
Yeah, my phone's not giving me my schedule, so I apologize.
Mr. Liebman just ha- raised his hand also.
26th is fine.
Okay. Um, okay, then let's um. Let's continue this meeting to October 26th or not, sorry, not the meeting, continue the application. It only seems like it's taking.
Are you sure that we're gonna have enough? Is everybody, I mean, the board members, everybody can be available, so we have a quorum.
Madame Chair, I think Carrie said somebody had their hands up. Carrie?
Mr. Liebman.
Mr. Liebman.
Has his hands up. I just don't know that we need to hear from him before we.
I thought we closed the public comment.
We did.
We did.
We did.
Okay.
Maybe he can call the planning office if he wants to coordinate. An appearance at the 26th uh special meeting.
Sure, I just have enough people, that's all, so.
Are there any board members who cannot attend on Tuesday, the 26th?
There we go. Thank you.
Everybody, okay. All right, um. So uh. Jim and Heather, you will um. Communicate with each other and, and with Michael Laplace and come up with a set of thing uh, you know. The, this, that sort of summarizes what we. Uh, need from applicant and um. And try to set deadlines such that you get what you need with enough time to, to digest it. Before the 26th.
And, and Madam Chair, I think what we will just do is communicate directly with. Um, their professionals to get the information that we need.
Okay, all right, whatever works. Whatever works.
And we will do that tomorrow.
Outstanding. Mister, oh. Oh, David, you were just doing this.
I was just giving a thumbs up, yeah.
Okay. All right, anything else?
Yeah, quick, quick, quick quest, quick question.
Yes, sir.
Are there any, are there any notice requirements?
I, I was just gonna say that, uh, Mr. McGowan, just, I always panic about nervous. Just to be clear, Madam Chair. This application is now continued to October 26th at 7:00 PM. No further notice will be required.
No further notices required. Um, I hope those members of the public who have hung on and. And uh, listen to all of this, put that date in their calendars, October 26th. I expect there may be. Uh. You know, various news articles that mention that date as well. I think that would be helpful. To the reporters who are also hanging in. And um, but yes, no more formal notice is required.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And thank you for accommodating the schedule.
Mm-hmm. Okay, um, Mr. Cohen, you're up.
Yes, I moved to adjourn.
Back in.
Back in.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Thanks, everybody. I'm real sorry. It was such a late night.
Madam Chair, I just want to note for the record that as we add meetings, we are not helping getting caught up on minutes. Just wanted to note that.
Yes.
If you could give us a little leniency, I know this is important, but.
I, I think you need to stop the recording, Carrie.
No, I wanted that on the record.
Point taken.
Good night.
Thank you.